Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our September 10th Council Conference Agenda Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you bring the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, first on our conference agenda tonight is a presentation for Second Chance Toys. Bianca Libden is the Executive Director. Hi, would you like to come up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney, thank you. Welcome tonight.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi. So, hi, everyone. My name is Susan McCartney, and I am the Township Sustainable Jersey Coordinator. This application, this is our re-certification application, this was due at midnight Sunday, two days ago, September 8. So, at 11:47 PM, I pressed Send to get our re-certification application on behalf of the township.
No, bless her.
The sustainable jersey application is all about green initiatives, things we can do in the town, changing people's behavior. It's lots and lots of work. And part of this is talking about recycling plastic. So, to keep plastic out of landfills back on Earth Day, we partnered with Second Chance Toys. Verona is, I understand, a West Orange resident, or former, West Orange resident, and started this company called Second Chance Toys. But it's about plastic, it's about recycling plastic. And with members of the Environmental Commission, Department of Public Works, Nick Solis, Mike Brick, my husband Joe McCartney, Chair of the Open Space Commission, we organized a toy drive to collect plastic toys up at Ospath. It was so well-received that we want to continue it as a year-long project to collect plastic toys. We have a company here in town that will disinfect the toys, and then we hand them over to Second Chance Toys so they can distribute them to charitable organizations. So, Verona's here to talk about that, and we'd like to introduce our little committee here.
Great, thanks, Susan. And thanks for finding Second Chance Toys and asking us to come to West Orange to do your shop and swap, or swap and shop, right? So, yes, I grew up in West Orange on Curtis Avenue, and I graduated what was then Mountain High School, and I'm thrilled to be back in my hometown and doing this for the town and for the earth and for children in need. It's completely gratifying for me. So, Second Chance Toys, we promote collections of gently-used plastic toys, and then we match them with organizations that have signed up on our website and want these gently-used plastic toys for children in need. And to date, we have donated over 350,000 toys, but we still have need for 400,000 toys, just of the organizations that have signed up with us. And in Essex County alone, I did a quick figuring before I came here, there are requests for 15,000 toys in Essex County alone. So, we have our work cut out for us, and I think it's great that West Orange wants to get together and collect toys all year round. It's really important, and thank you, Nick, for coming, stepping up to the plate and letting us do this. We really appreciate it. So, how does it work? Well, the recycling center gets a closed bin, and it's got to be big because we had, for instance, in Westfield, we had, they got a small shed, and within a few months, it was just, you know, it outgrew. All the donations were coming out the door of the shed. So, they switched to an industrial container, and that's what we're going to get here in West Orange. And then, by the summer, or next spring or summer, there should be a good amount of toys, probably 1,000, 1,500 toys. And we'll bring in a clean team, or perhaps work with the germ police, we'll see how that goes. And we clean the toys, and in about three to four hours, we can clean 1,000 to 1,500 toys. Those toys are bagged up, and then we designate what organizations they go to. We have 1-800-GOT-JUNK works with us. They volunteer their time trucks and manpower, and they come and pick up the toys and bring them exactly to those organizations that we have designated that very same day. So, it is a completely turnkey operation, and it's free to the town, and it's points for sustainable jersey. So, that helps you get your status as a sustainable jersey member. So, there's all good things. It's a win-win. It's a win-win for the environment, for children in need, putting toys into their hands. Let's see. So, West Orange is number 12, the 12th town to sign on to this program. We're all over New Jersey, and we expect to expand it in every county of New Jersey. That's our goal. And this is within the last year, we've gotten 12 recycling centers. So, it's been going very quickly, and we're thrilled. So, again, we fill up the container, we bring in a clean team to clean the toys, or your germ police, and then we transport the toys, and it's really a win-win. But since it's free to the town, what we do is ask the town to introduce us to companies, businesses, corporations in the general vicinity. It doesn't have to be in your exact town. We ask them to introduce us, and in order for us to get support from them. And many of the companies that we're working with see the benefit of aligning themselves with a mission like ours that's good, helping children and green, helping the environment. And so, we would ask that West Orange would introduce us, make introductions, so that we can defray our costs for doing this program because we never charge the town. So, we're hoping for that. And bottom line is that thousands of pounds of plastic are being kept out of the waste stream, and they're being kept out of the West Orange waste stream in particular, and that would happen each year. And they're put into the hands of children, and these tools of play are helping children socially, creatively, emotionally, and just to have fun. So, thank you very much for adopting this program with Second Chance Toys. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to a continued relationship.
Wow, thank you.
Wonderful. So, on that note, I know Nick pays attention to all our details, so I don't know if we left anything out I wanted you to talk about, something about that. We want to set up another date, probably in mid-October. We're thinking October 13. That would be my birthday. Because part of what we're doing, if this container is at the recycling center, anyone can go there and leave their toys. But on that particular Sunday, or if we have another Sunday that we choose, that's what we have to do. That would be a day where it's open to the public, where you can come and go through the toys, and if there's anything you like, you can take, and that's free also. So, that's what we call it, a shop and swap. You can leave your plastic toys and take whatever you like.
You have to bring one to take.
You gotta bring one to take.
I did want to mention one more thing.
No, you don't.
Roma just forgot to say, one real important thing is, which is, the toys are going to be reused and also recycled. What happens with that, we wind up with the tonnage reports, which increases our tonnage in our recycling ramp.
That's the most important point, because this whole push to recycle what we've been doing is that the more we can take out of our trash, hauling trash away, the less we have to pay. So, the bottom line is, we save tax dollars the more that we recycle, which is why we make ourselves crazy doing this.
I'd just like to say one more thing, and that is, when we look for gently-used plastic toys, we're not looking for those outdoor, large, equipment-type toys, the sliding boards and the sandboxes in the pools. So, please remember, they're gently-used indoor plastic toys, and no stuffed animals, please. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yeah, do you have another?
Okay, we might have a question here.
Sure. Yes, Councilwoman Castellino?
First of all, thank you very much for this initiative. It's really great for our township. Do you, can they bring battery-operated, or should...
Yes, absolutely. But we always say, please donate as you would like, something donated to your own child. So, don't give a battery-operated toy that the battery's not functioning.
Okay. Fair enough.
Make sure you take the batteries out.
Uh-huh. We just keep them together.
And if you have a toy that has a lot of loose pieces, please donate it in a baggie tape to the toy so that the pieces don't get dispersed in the container, in the collection container. Any other questions? Thank you very much, again.
Thank you. See you soon.
Anyone else have any questions? Councilwoman Matute Brown, any questions? Councilman Kukoviac? Okay. Next, next up, Councilwoman, this is your thing too. Our next presentation by Councilwoman McCartney is proclamation from New Jersey American Water. It's an environmental grant, which we thank them for. Mr. Scott Brzezinski, manager of water quality, environmental. Would you like to come up, sir? You both can come up. So, it's like, thank you, and welcome tonight.
Well, this year, this, we do need Nick Solis because we were instrumental in putting together a grant called Downstream to the River, and the plan is to clean the debris out of the east branch of the, west branch, the west branch of the roadway river that runs from the Orange Reservoir behind McLunes, kind of parallel to St. Cloud Avenue?
It goes down.
Uh-huh, to Degnan Pond, behind the high school. Nick, you can talk more about that.
What we're going to do first?
There you go.
All right. Downstream to the river, actually, what we're going to do is, we're going to start at Vincent's Pond, which is, I'm doing presently a litter survey, which we're including also clean communities. We're going to involve Boy Scouts, we're going to involve students. The students from our high school are...
West Orange Women's Club.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. What were they?
West Orange Women's Club.
West Orange Women's Club are going to volunteer also, and we got the director of science, Ryan?
Oh, Ryan Del Gersio.
Yeah, Ryan Del Gersio, the director of Science Technology, which is going to build artificial floating islands for our lakes. These islands, what they're going to do is clean up most of the algae, bacteria, the salts that are in our lakes, basically purifying, that eventually, we're going to wind up that we won't need any aerators to clean up the lakes. You won't see all that green algae there anymore. So, we're going to try to, from Degnan, that's our student component, which is going to be there. Then, we're going to go, because the river goes in underground, and then it goes above ground, and then it goes back underground in a few locations. And Public Works is going to pull out all the trees that are in waterways that are blocking a lot of the water from flowing and flooding, and that's basically it. And that's what we really put into our application, and that's why New Jersey American Water awarded us this money.
Again, this was an insurance.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name's Andy Lewis. I'm the Senior Director of Operations for New Jersey American Water North Operations. I would like to recognize Scott Brzezinski. He's our manager of water quality and environmental compliance for my region. And I really wanted to congratulate the Township of West Orange for a great project. New Jersey American Water selects three candidates each year from a very long list of applicants, and we're really proud of this. We're proud of you all for developing this initiative. Anything that our communities can do to clean up waterways, improve environmental compliance, it helps the community, and ultimately, it helps us. As noticed, if you know, our primary source of drinking water is surface water sources. Whether it's for our region or other regions south of us, it's important to us, and we're really happy to be able to contribute to this project. So, congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
Well done. All right. So, on behalf of American Water, we're going to present the initial installment, maybe $100 for this project.
Okay. Excuse me, before anybody leaves, Councilwoman Castellino has a question. Okay. Councilwoman?
Yeah, well, this is mainly for Nick. Nick, all your work this past year with our, working with our students, I just want you to actually put in, not so much a question, but just a plug for what the Scouts could do. This is a great project for them, but during the course of the year, if you could just, because you're, tell the folks at home, or the Scout Masters at home, how the Scouts could get involved with your other litter cleanup projects.
I will, I will do that. But the first phase of it, like I said to you, has to be the litter cleanup. Okay, I got to finish the survey. Once I complete the survey, because I got to put down, actually, a cigarette butt, a cup, a bottle, plastic bag, the whole, and then I got to send it to the director of Clean Communities, which she's going to review it, and then we can start with our Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, actually, we could use both, and start picking up the litter. We supply all the materials.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And actually, I made Cynthia aware, Cynthia Cummins, I made her aware that this was at our last environmental meeting, that this is going to occur.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much, American Water. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Nice take.
All right.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate it. I have the duty tonight of presenting a proclamation. I'd like Ms. Tammy Williams to please join me up here, if you would, please. Thank you, Tammy. Ms. Williams has been very instrumental in creating and formulating and putting together, of course, our Suicide Prevention Coalition and program, especially for our youth, and we thank you for that as a township and as a community. So, thank you, Tammy. Tonight, I have a proclamation to make on behalf of the mayor and Township Council for proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Week, which is September 8 through the 14. And if you will allow, I got to take my glasses off because these are not reading glasses, so I'm sorry. Proclamation. Finding Purpose, Caring for Ourselves and Others. Whereas, Suicide Prevention Week is dedicated to the role everyone in our community can play in preventing suicide, and all community members are encouraged to know the signs, find the words, and reach out to someone they are concerned about. And whereas preventing suicide requires the efforts of many, from individual friends, families, neighbors, and coworkers, to government agencies and community organizations from a wide range of sectors, and whereas suicide is a public health issue in our community, and each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, coworkers, loved ones, and often the entire community as a whole. And whereas the Township of West Orange is committed to promoting protective factors against suicide, such as access to effective behavioral health and health care, and whereas suicide prevention requires a comprehensive, multi-level approach that encompasses strategies for prevention, early intervention, treatment, and postvention and after death as occurred. And whereas September 8 through the 14 is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week, and provides the opportunity to educate our community about warning signs and how best to help those most in need. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by Mayor Robert D. Parisi and the West Orange Township Council that the 10th day of September 2019, that the week of September 8 through the 14, 2019, be declared Suicide Prevention Week throughout the entire township of the Township of West Orange. Tammy, thank you very much for what you do, and please feel free to make a few comments and everything else, and thank you on behalf of our community.
Thank you. This is quite a pleasure and a surprise, and I appreciate the privilege to receive this proclamation today. Not only is it a Suicide Prevention Week, today, September 10, is World Suicide Prevention Day. So, I'm so happy to receive this award on this particular day. It means a significant amount of pride for me. Also, just wanted to let you know that the West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition is hosting several events this week at the high school between the hours of 10:20 to 11:20. That's the first lunch period. We are partnering with the Grassroots Organization to not only support our students at the high school with Mental Health Week in addition to Suicide Prevention Week. So, we're giving out these wonderful Let's Talk About It bracelets to all of our high school students, and we'll continue to have activities through the rest of September. We are going to participate with the girls volleyball team on September 24 at their home game against Verona, just to spread the word. On this Thursday, September 12, we're hosting a free, private movie screening of a movie by one of our local residents, executive producers, writers, and directors, William Michael Barbie, and the movie is called Beyond Silence. All are welcome to attend. That's going to be held at Luna Stage at 7:00 PM on Thursday evening. In addition to that, our activities will culminate on October 6 at Rock Spring Golf Club with a Run for Zack. That's going to be a 5K walk-run, starting at 4:00 PM. Doors will open at 2:30 PM. This run is going to raise awareness and increase prevention about suicide. Zack was a resident of West Orange, born, raised, educated, graduated from the high school, and he died by suicide on February of 2018. So, we'll be honoring him this year with the race, just educating, trying to raise awareness and advocacy for all those who have been impacted by suicide. It is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and between boys 10 and 24, it is the second cause of death. And that's not just boys, including children aged 10 to 24. But boys do have the highest rate of increase in the statistics from 2017. So, thank you for your indulgence. Please, everyone, continue to wear purple this week. Those are the colors for suicide prevention. And also, check out our Facebook page on Facebook. It's the West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition, as well as our website on Google. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tammy. Yes. Thank you very much, Tammy. Okay, moving right along on the agenda for tonight. Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross, any updates on redevelopment?
Yes. Actually, I spoke to someone today. There are now currently 183 leases on the property, and 158 people are actually looking to build, which is more than what it was to be sold, obviously. And the Phase 2 project, there will be going before the planning board and the next planning board. That's what I was told to have. It's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Mr. Sayers, is entire Phase 1 all completed, construction all completed on Phase 1?
Um, you know what, I'm not sure. I think maybe something in the law is maybe not completed, but I think most of it is done. 99, 90 to 99% is done. But I think there might be some things still in the law, but maybe we'll have to get that. I'll have to check that.
Yeah, please check that. And of course, you know, my typical question is, what about the retail? You know, that's what we like to get some really good excitement about.
We've organized the commercial spaces, and I mean, we've got some people, we've given them up.
Okay. My colleagues, Councilman Kukoviac, any questions on redevelopment?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up. At the last council meeting, I had asked about what appeared to be delinquent taxes, and I got an answer from Mr. Gross after that. I wanted to just close the loop, just in case anybody was wondering what happened. Mr. Gross, would it be appropriate to just ask you about the, what appeared to be delinquent taxes? I think one of them was delinquent, but the other one wasn't, if I recall correctly?
All I, you know, I know we reported back to you at that point in time. Everything, they've paid everything they've been building.
Okay.
Up to date.
Okay. So, the one that was not delinquent was the pilot payment, if I understood your email correctly, because that has to be sort of billed and then paid. But there was a delinquency on Phase 2, but that has been subsequently paid.
Everything is up to date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Questions?
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything, okay, council liaison announcements. Councilman Kukoviac?
Very quickly, the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission and the Open Space Committee are meeting tomorrow in Town Hall, both at 7:00 PM. So, there may be a fight as to where people are going to be, actually not. The Open Space Committee is going to be in the conference room 109, and the Historic Preservation Commission is going to be here on, in council chambers. Also, on Thursday night is a monthly meeting of the Friends of the West Orange Public Library, at the library on Thursday, and we will be talking about the annual book sale that's coming up. But I'm going to leave that to Councilwoman Castellino because she does such an excellent job on that, and I don't have, I don't have the facts in front of me. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of time to pull it together.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to, I'm going to go now. Okay. Just go a little out of order. We're going to go this way now. It's my turn. At, just like to know, this Sunday is a very, very busy Sunday. At 7:30 AM at West Orange High School will be the next run of the botulony, the Run for Nikhil. So, if you need additional information on that, you could go to wwwstopfornikhil.org and get more information. I believe registration is still open. I'm not really sure. But it's a great event. It's a great thing to show the community involvement, particularly for educating our youth in pedestrian and driver safety. And I just encourage all of you to make an effort. Either if you're not going to run, to, you know, contribute, to participate, come and watch and cheer this great thing, and cheer on the new winner. And of course, Mr. Joe Fagan, our town historian, will of course be our annual emcee. Am I still correct, Joe?
I will be part of the ceremony.
Thank you, sir. So hope you all could be there. Tomorrow night at 7:30 is our monthly West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting, 7:30 at the Essex County Educational Center or Turtle Bag Zoo. We hope you'll turn out for that. At our last meeting, we were visited and participated by 12 members of the newly-created Milburn Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. They've copied our ordinance and our structure, because they felt that we did a tremendous job on what we've accomplished in our first five years, and they were very, very impressed. And they will be coming back to another meeting, because not tomorrow night, but the future week, we're having people from Safe Streets and Safe Walks to come and make a presentation. And I will give you more details as that meeting comes together. Also, on behalf of the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, we're doing our Second Annual Bike Rodeo, which will be held at Washington School on September 25th with a rain date of September 26th. It's sponsored by the West Orange Police Department, the West Orange Elks, Easy Ride New Jersey, and the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Students, the must-complete release form, which are available in all our schools, it's been approved by the West Orange Board of Education. And of course, I'd like to thank Principal Marie De Mayo, Dr., our new principal superintendent, Dr. Cascon, and the entire community, particularly the police department, for supporting us in this effort. We do give out free bike, new bike helmets, which are required. And last year, we had 85 participants. We hope to get as many, if not more, this year. So please come and participate, and it will be barbecue-sponsored after the event at the Elks Club, and we thank the Elks for that. I also want to give a big shout-out to Lisa Lee from Easy Ride New Jersey, and Lori Caffner, a member of my pedestrian safety advisory board, who really come together and put together this program. So I really want to thank them. Also, hopefully tomorrow night, we will have the introduction of the Main Street Road Diet Program. The blueprints are finally done, the schematics, everything has been completed, and now will be presented to the Pedestrian Safety Board for our comments, and also then to the Township Council. And then, once it's approved by the Township Council, it will be resubmitted to the local merchants and residents along the Main Street corridor to get their input on the road diet. As I have to emphasize, that we need to include our, you know, our residents and our merchants, because as the members of the Milburn Pedestrian Safety Board said, their mistake was not involving their downtown community in their Complete Streets program. That's why it didn't work, and that's why they had to pull it out and redo it. So we're doing it the right way. So as, once we get it, once the council gets it, we will have a downtown meeting and bring the merchants and the residents, any residents too, to come to see what we're proposing for the road diet. It's going to be very exciting. We're really excited about it. Also, there'll be a mid-block crosswalk at Edison Middle School, so the students can press a button and signal to the traffic they have to stop, so the students can safely cross Main Street from Edison Middle School to the other side of Main Street. So I really want to thank Mr. Lepore and the members of my board for pulling this together. It's really an exciting thing to show, we're pulling the pieces together for Complete Streets. The last thing I want to talk about is that, talking about, you know, recycling, how all the towns and the areas are coming up with their recycling programs. A lot of them are just not really perfect, and to the work that Councilwoman McCartney has done in complete with sustainability, this, but I'm trying to bring together, and I will make Councilwoman McCartney and my fellow members, I brought Livingston involved, they've started their own thing, but they want to work with us. Milburn is showing interest, they want to work with us and the township of West Caldwell. They feel that we get together as a complete group and work this through together, that we have something that's really intelligent and not just haphazard and throwing out. Councilwoman Castellino can attest to, the thing is down in, you know, South Jersey by Long Beach Island, Stafford County, they put together a recycling program, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman, but the residents there just go over to the next town and shop, because it's really not a good program. So that's what we're trying to do, and I'm not taking this on myself, but I am, of course, including my council colleagues, and of course, we will reach out to our community. But Livingston is very excited, they really got a good group together of merchants, professionals that we have, Wake, you know, ShopRite, CVS, and Wegmans. So they're all telling, everybody's putting in their little pieces, and so we want to do this intelligently, and not just put out an ordinance that's going to have to be amended, because we don't know when the state's going to do their requirement. What we're hearing, we're talking two years before the state puts their judgment out and things like that. So I just wanted to make you all aware of what's going on. We're not just sitting back on our hands, but we want to do this in a very constructive and proficient way. So we just want to make sure, da-da-da-da-da. No, thank you very much. Thank you to my colleagues. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So I can pick up on where he left off with partnerships, because just having that presentation with the Environmental Commission, working with New Jersey American Water, DPW, and for Second Chance Toys, those were innovative projects that we put together for our Sustainable Jersey application, but all the nitty-ditty, nitty-gritty details have to do with all of the departments also. So the Finance Department, the Health Department, Planning Department, you mentioned, we have points for a lot of the Safe Routes to School projects that the Pedestrian Safety Commission has done, the Open Space Commission, they were just here, my husband was just here as the chair, the tours and the plans that they put together for the master plan help in our recertification. Historic Preservation, even the libraries involved in this, Police Department and the Fire Department, this particular round of this application have been very, very helpful. So, West Orange Arts Council side, there's a list of things. So besides just announcing the major events that we worked on, I do have to thank all the departments for pitching in, for the supporting documentation that goes with this. I want to thank Tammy. Part of that, you know, so really, if anyone is interested in the Run for Zack, information is on the website at westorange.org. Type in Suicide Prevention Coalition, and information will come up if you wanted to register for this event. But Suzanne Pennell is here, other members of the Historic Preservation, Human Relations Commission. My colleague Michelle and I are on the Coalition, members of the Board of Education, the Police Department, residents in the community. It is growing to be a very supportive coalition. Thank you, Tammy, for your leadership. What else? Last night, the Rent a House met last night. I'm sorry, didn't make the senior picnic last week, start of the new school year. Swamped. The Rent a House, at the Rent a House, we're working on standby generators, and applications are still being accepted for residents at the Rent a House for walk-in tubs, making it very convenient for the residents there. There's too much going on with the West Orange Arts Council, so I just invite you to visit warts.org to see all of the wonderful programming going on there. Also, visit lunastage.org to find out about their upcoming season. News on the planning board, we met the first Wednesday, last Wednesday, September 4th. We have the plan for the redevelopment plan for the library is going to be 65 senior housing, affordable housing. So the library will come down, the senior housing goes up. But what we see on the back of, I guess, the newest addition of the library, that remains. That will be 7,500 square feet of community space, so would be space for a library, community center within that existing space. So all of that would be renovated. And just last planning board meeting, Zoofall Health was approved. Zoofall Health is a clinic, it's presently on Northfield Avenue, at the base of Northfield Avenue, they have outgrown their space. They are taking down two buildings right across the street here on Mount Pleasant Avenue, and building a state-of-the-art facility, very accessible to their clientele, right here on Mount Pleasant Avenue. And I, an invitation, I would like to invite everyone again, the, we are the only municipality in the United States that has a national historic park on our main street, and we have the Thomas Edison, the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park. I have memberships, if you would like to join, to support what the Friends do. Their mission is to raise funds, to conserve and preserve the artifacts that are right here on our main street and in Llewellyn Park at Glenmont. So our next fundraising event is this Glenmont Garden Party. Again, go to westorange.org, find all the information, or friendsofedison.org. Tickets are $50. Month proceeds are going to two historic bird feeders in Mina Edison's greenhouse garden. This is a cocktail reception. West Orange High School String Quartet will be available to play for us. West Orange resident and musician extraordinaire Jim Keith is also on our program. And West Orange Chamber members, Poorhouse, right here on Main Street, is, provides our signature cocktail called the Electric Spark, because we did raise enough funds to conserve the electric, the first electric charging station that Edison had in his garage at Glenmont. We have Nicholas Anthony, the Wilshire Grand Caterers, and the Manor provides delicious desserts. So we invite everyone, September 28th, Sunday, Saturday afternoon, from 4:00 to 6:30. This is in Llewellyn Park at the home of Thomas Edison, Glenmont. Everyone's invited. I will leave invitations for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, Councilwoman Matute Brown, if I may just ask, I forgot one thing. Are you done, Councilwoman?
I think so.
Okay. And Councilwoman Matute Brown, just bear with me. What I did forget, and I would be totally beat up if I didn't, also, September 22nd is the mayor's 5K Run for Ovarian Cancer. It's a fantastic program. You can still register for the program. Come together, form a team. It's a great community event. People from all over the area come and race. It's a wonderful thing to do. It's a, it's a, it's a program, and for, you know, an illness that we need to address, and the money that we raise goes strictly for education and goes for research. Last year, we raised, I believe, $125,000. Hopefully, this year, we'll increase it even more. So I ask all our residents and friends to come, support, participate. Maybe you want to come and cheer on the runners. It's a great, it's a great, great program. You can find the access to it at www.westorange.org and find the application and registration there. Thank you, Councilwoman Matute Brown.
And I will be brief with respect to liaison announcements. Today, the municipal alliance met to discuss, as a focus group, all of the challenges that they feel are faced with drugs and alcohol here in town. There is a deadline for a grant coming up, so they need to revise that application, and I'm happy to see that there is new representation from different parts and sectors of town, including the West Orange School District, which I think is very important. So I'm happy to see that they're on their way, and kudos to Laura Van Dyke, who's come in and assumed a lot of that responsibility and then some. So thank you to all who are volunteering. Just a reminder that the Hispanic Heritage, Hispanic Foundation and the West Orange Library are hosting a flag raising in order, in honor of Hispanic heritage on September 21st at 1:30. There will be performances, it'll be behind the library, so please, if you are available, please show some support and attend. And I wanted to also just remind everyone that on tomorrow, actually, I'll leave that for Anthony, I see him here. Then a special thanks to all who participated. Essex Rising organized a town panel discussion held yesterday with our chief of police and a couple of other West Orange police captains and sergeants to discuss the memorandum of understanding that we signed with Ring. The town council majority passed that, and there was some objection posed, and so the chief offered to have a session to answer questions and provide his perspective. That panel was also enhanced by one of our new residents, Evan Feeney, who works for ColorOfChange.org, and they are a social and racial justice advocacy group, who are involved in a lot of advocacy issues that pertain to so many of us here. And also, STOP was here, Surveillance Technology Oversight Project, Attorney Khan out of New York, this is what they do. And there was a lot of information shared last night that, that some of us knew, some of us are just learning about the implications of technology. Technology is a wonderful thing, but it's also incredibly dangerous when we're looking at giving up, or how much of our civil liberties we want to give up. So that, that forum was really, really informational. So if you were not able to make it, I know we had a full house, and we also had people from Montclair come over, Essex Rising's public Facebook page streamed it live, please do take a listen to that. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you. I just want to top off what my colleague just said about the seminar last night. I found it very educational, and I appreciate Essex Rising for putting that together. When we talk about privacy and we talk about our cell phones, I just have to make my colleague laugh, because she was at the presentation last night, that I have a Google phone, and we were talking about the Ring and with Amazon, the Ring last night, and this morning, on my ads, all, I got a lot of ads from Google Nest, which is their products. So that kind of creeped me out. I saw that after the meeting, so it is amazing with the technology, and we, something very informative we all have to look out for. So thank you for putting that together. Liaison announcements, Deckman House will be getting a new roof. The bids were approved, and the work will be starting within a couple weeks, so I know the residents are looking forward to that. So that will be happening this fall. And I just want to, a few congratulations, very festive here in the township the past couple weeks, which has been great. Sunday, if you drove by Aaron's Supermarket, they had a beautiful fair for the township. They were celebrating their year anniversary, and a lot of people were there. There was rides for the kids, and it was just really nice to give back. They had a little trouble getting out of the gate open last year from now, and they worked on all their issues with the township, and it was just nice to see the public enjoying their facility. As well, ShopRite also had a new facelift, and they had a party also. So a lot, a lot of going on with our food, distribute, food stores in the township this weekend. But I want to congratulate also, speaking of carnivals, to our football booster and cheer booster clubs. They, if you drove by the high school, they had a great carnival last month, and I really have to commend them. We didn't have one complaint from anyone in the neighborhood. They did an outstanding job, raised a lot of money for our school sports programs, and I really appreciate our Police Department Administration, Fire Department, and SIR team for coming out to assist them with that, that event. So great event, very festive, and a great way to start this school year. The other night, the school kickoff football team, the kids got to play at Rucker Stadium, which was pretty cool. So it's just nice to see new superintendent, you know, they were having issues too a year ago, and it's nice to see them have a great start to a new year for all, so we wish them all a lot of luck. Our Powell kids will be being honored, actually, Friday night at the high school with the new football team. So it's great to see our feeder programs once again, you know, working with our high school, and hopefully, we'll see much more success for, for all this coming year. Let's see, we have here Senior Services, very exciting, had a great meeting with our senior service staff. Hopefully, next meeting, Dorothy Sanders, our new Senior Liberties Coordinator, will be present. Dorothy, we were able to have her position due to the Partners for Health Grant that we received this past couple months, and it's been great already. The team has been set. Councilwoman Matute Brown mentioned Laura Van Dyke with, with her initiatives that she's been doing with that department, but also with Senior Services, a really great coalition that they got together, Susan Iovino. We have here Senior Services, very exciting. Had a great meeting with our senior service staff. Um, hopefully, next meeting, Dorothy Sanders, our new Senior Livabilities Coordinator, uh, will be present. Uh, Dorothy, we were able to, um, have her position due to the Partners for Health Grant, uh, that we received this past couple months, and it's been great already. The team has been set. Uh, Councilwoman Matute Brown mentioned Laura Van Dyke with, um, with her initiatives that she's been doing, um, with, uh, that department, but also with Senior Services. A really great coalition, uh, that they got together. Susan Iovino, um, uh, Neola, Noelia Perez, they've done a great job. The Senior Picnic was great. We had well over a hundred residents last week, and everyone, a good time was had by all. We're trying to get some information out, so out of the lot of the senior, bigger senior events, we had a survey handed out to our residents. And we're going to be in constant contact with them, with what programs do you like? What should we start doing? What should we keep doing? What should we stop doing? And any other suggestions. So, it's all that collaboration coming together, which was very exciting. We also had Brian Plank, our library coordinator, uh, that Dave Cubey had, uh, hired. He just, um, started about three months ago. They put together a great calendar, so right now, they're working on a calendar that will be posted to the website. So, a lot of great outreach to our residents, a lot of new programming coming, and, uh, just very, very exciting to see everyone collaborate together and get some information out. Uh, stop by Rock Spring, um, Country Club last week to pick up a gift card. They do sell gift cards with the holidays coming. They have a great pro shop, uh, with great merchandise there. So, if you need a gift, great place to stop by. And they're also open for parties as well now. I got a copy of the menus. Someone I know is having a, a baby shower there, so stop by, visit the facility. And if you're looking to have a, a party, it's a great place to have a venue. Next month, uh, we're looking forward to the West Orange Dog Parade will be, uh, out again, so start looking for costume for your, for your, uh, for your, uh, dogs. And all funding will go to, all donations will go to the West Orange Animal Shelter, and we thank Laura Ladd and Stacy Reese for putting that together. Last year, it was up at O'Connor Park, and this year, uh, they're going to have it down in, in the back, not by the stands, but at the farmer's market, which will be great. That's just been so awesome this summer, all the work, um, that they've been doing at the farmer's market. It's just been just great festive here in the township lately. And, uh, as Councilwoman Kukoviac, um, spoke earlier, please bring any donations that you have, uh, for, for the Friends of the West Orange Public Light. Berry's Book Sale, uh, is going on. The book sale is next month, October fifth and sixth. They are looking for donations of new and unused books that are in good condition. Please drop them off if you have any available, and all, all funds, um, will go to the West Orange Public Light. Sorry. And I think that's it. Just kudos, um, to Mr. Keough. Uh, West Orange Old Timers' Day was Saturday. It's a great event where we have, uh, former athletes from Holgate Park, um, whether they're in, still in the township, or they're, they moved out of the township, have come back to celebrate a lot of great recognition and, uh, activities that were had, and, uh, he did a nice job there. So, just wanted to give the Recreation Department a shout out. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kukoviac.
I, since Councilwoman Castellino, uh, saved my, uh, failure, I just wanted to just amend, uh, something you said.
Sure.
Uh, this came in very recently. Um, we've had such a good outpouring of donations of books, the, the Friends are no longer taking all books, they're just taking, uh, children's and young adults' books. So, uh, we really would like those, uh, but the rest of them, you'll just have to hold off until, uh, our next, our next one.
Spring, or spring sale.
Anyway, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I have to add one thing, because I'd be very remiss. I'm sorry, I, I do this a lot. This past weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, up at the high school complex in O'Connor, the Mountain Top League, in conjunction with Livingston Soccer Club, we held our eighteenth annual Essex Falls Soccer Tournament. Fantastic turnout, record year of a hundred and seventy-five teams from all over the state of New Jersey. Our West Orange teams won a number of championship games, uh, so we're very proud of it. It's a fantastic event. My compliments to the Mountain Top League, West Orange United Soccer, uh, and Pete Scolora, who is the former president, uh, is, uh, the bi-commissioner of, uh, the committee, um, on the committee, and it's a great event. And, uh, if you missed it, come out next year. It's held around the same time every year. It's a great thing. Just come and watch the kids. They're, it's phenomenal. These are future, you know, JV and varsity teams, um, so we do. And also, our congratulations and our wishes to the West Orange High School JV freshman and varsity teams, both girls and the boys. We wish them luck, uh, and having a great year. Madam Clerk.
Okay. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law nineteen-seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Carino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for being here for our September tenth public, uh, West Orange Township Council Meeting. I'd like to open the floor to, uh, public comment, and Mr. Mike Brick. I hear you'd like to make some comments, sir?
Yes, I would, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I stand before you as a little raspy, so please bear with me. I have, uh, I'm getting over a throat infection, so I might lose my voice as I'm speaking. So, um, discussing, as chairman of the, um, West Orange Environmental Commission, I'm here to discuss a resolution that has passed through the council that I feel is very important for our town and our county. And I would like to have our television audience understand the ramifications of it and the importance of it. Before I start, I would like everyone to understand that West Orange is an innovative town for intelligent, unique thought. And we give out little pins to represent that. And I'd like, I'd ask Michelle to pass these out to everybody on the council, because it represents what we are as a town. We are a town of innovators. We are originators of thought. We think outside the box, and we bring an intelligence to problems that we all have in our world. So, saying that, and bear with me, please, um, I'd like, uh, a question. Has the resolution passed through?
No.
I'm sorry?
It's on our agenda.
The resolution that we're discussing?
What resolution are you talking about?
The resolution for the Turtleback Zoo and...
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
So, will, will it be on the agenda tonight?
It's on the agenda tonight, sir.
Okay. So, I'm going to just discuss it for a bit. So...
In, in your three minutes.
I'd, well, I need a little bit more. I'd like, I'd like to congratulate everybody here for dealing with this very important resolution. Um, we're joining surrounding townships who also have adapted their own similar resolutions. So, we don't stand alone with this. We're with our fellow townspeople in Essex County who surround the, um, the reservation. This resolution is a time of taking a deep breath for the, our towns and county to reassess plans and concepts for the zoo and the South Mountain Reservation, which is the jewel of the Essex County parks. We are all proud of the zoo and its evolution to be both educational and recreational. Some say the concept of a zoo is now archaic. I think most intelligent people sense an evolving consciousness of the role of a zoo in our society. A zoo is defined as a place to contain all types of animals for display, and we ask why? Simply to educate ourselves as to their, as to their appearance is now really not nearly enough in our complicated world. To understand man's place on our earth is to understand that all living entities and their interrelationships. Mankind is destroying habitats and animal species by our expanding populations and industrial processes. A zoo today must educate all generations about our biosphere and how precious it has become. It is not nearly simply enough to view animals as a curiosity to entertain ourselves. We could create all types of zoos using modern technology of special photography, both micro and macro, to see in detail unicellular animals, bacterias, life evolving with the most amazing technical photography and video. If you just watched the Disney Channel and Discovery and PBS to see our natural world in living color, close-up and very intimate with zoologists, naturalists explaining life to us. We could have our, we could have a zoo of our own intestines, all thirty-two feet of them. In those intestines are billions of animals, our probiotics that predigest our food so our bodies can absorb our nutrients. Or we could have a zoo of a square yard of forest soil teeming with billions of bacteria and tiny animals, all eating each other and creating the basis for plant life and larger animals, insects, birds, mammals, reptiles.
Your time is up.
Mankind.
Michael.
You have to wrap it up.
You know, we appreciate, Michael, we know where your heart is. I know, I especially know where your heart is in your comments, but I can't, and I can't go, let you go forward. You should produce that, what you want to say and everything else, but I thank you, but I can't give you any extra time, Michael. In all due respect to you.
Well, thank you for listening to me. We, I hope this resolution, that we understand, is very critical to our town, and we will continue the dialogue for it, because it needs intelligent thought at all levels. And I'm trying to get everyone in town to understand...
Thank you, sir.
That that's what we must do.
Thank you.
So, thank you for listening to me. The Environmental Commission will continue its work, and we want everyone to understand that...
We know.
...this concept has to be adhered to so that we can move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Brick. Thank you for your service to the township.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. I especially appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, Miss, yes, Susan, good evening. I said Pennell, right? Oh, I'm sorry.
Suzanne, Mrs. Pennell.
We talk too much up here, sir.
Yeah, that's all good. Suzanne Pennell, Twenty-Seven Fairview Avenue. Thank you, Council President. I'm here this evening to speak about the annual collection I co-chair to provide care packages for our military men and women stationed or deployed away from home during the holiday season, known this year as For Our Troops 2019. Every year, thousands of our service personnel are based around the country and indeed the world, away from family and friends for months, even years at a time. This includes young men and women from West Orange and surrounding communities. With the world constantly brewing new or continued hotspots, service to our country is vital to our national security, but that service is the cause of much worry for the loved ones of our military. My son, a Navy Ensign, returned from a long deployment a few months ago and will likely be out again in a few months. So, I know intimately those nagging fears each time I hear a news report of unrest in the area near his ship's location. So, it is the very least that we, as a community, can do to show a little support and gratitude and spread a little cheer by donating items and writing some cards to fill boxes that our group, For Our Troops 2019, will collect, pack, and send. Last year, we mailed out over one hundred and fifty boxes, many of which were received by recipients from our own township, including my son. And those boxes and those contents were much appreciated based on the many thank-you cards and messages that we got back. So, what items are needed? Everything from hotel-sized toiletries, feminine products, foot powder, baby wipes, Gatorade packets, packets, beef jerky, crackers, snacks, card games, and yes, their favorite, candy. Pick up an extra bag when you go out and get your stash for the trick-or-treaters. And homemade cards and letters are truly loved by our troops, especially ones designed by children. I kept this one just because it was just too precious. Some exciting news this year. For Our Troops 2019 will have a table at the fabulous West Orange Farmer's Market this fall, both on September twenty-first and October nineteenth. Thank you, Stacy Reese. Where you can drop off donations, and we'll also have materials there for you, so you can design your own holiday card or write a short letter if you wish. And thanks to the amazing support and help from Councilwoman McCartney, For Our Troops 2019 will have access to store non-perishable items at a DPW facility, and we are so grateful. Thank you so much. Our packing day will be in early December at the Roseland First Aid Squad Building, and volunteers will be needed to help the day before and the day of. The most difficult part of our endeavor is the cost of shipping. Post office rates for military boxes are almost nineteen dollars for APO and FPO, FPO addresses, and over twenty dollars for civilian addresses. We have to raise all the funds to cover the amount due at the post office on shipping day. Last year, we needed over three thousand dollars to ship the hundred and sixty-five boxes. Monetary donations are sorely needed, and any amount is gratefully accepted. Tax receipts are issued on shipping day, which will also be in early December. Please join us at the farmer's market or contact me through Facebook Messenger or my email, which is cellomom144@aul.com, or follow my posts on the many West Orange Facebook groups for more information. I have placed some copies of our donations list and my contact information on the table. I would be so grateful for your help in supporting our collection. Our servicemen and women sacrificed so much in fulfilling the oath that they took to defend and protect our country. Let us join together to spread some wonderful West Orange holiday cheer to our troops and send them a great big thank you for what they do for each and every one of us. Thank you so much, and may they always, always all come home safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. And please give Dylan our best and best wishes. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing?
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. I want to thank you for producing the Turtleback Zoo Resolution, and I have a copy of it right here. And while it's not a legally binding document, it, it is a moral document that has to convey a sense of, uh, the, the community's understanding of the situation, uh, at the Turtleback Zoo and the reservation. I would like to bring your attention to a few of the sections. Do you have copies of it with you?
Yes.
I want to move quickly, so I, I want to point out four lines in the whereas department that I think we ought to take a second look at. Uh, going down to the six whereas, we're, Essex County is committed to providing the highest level of animal care. We don't, we don't know if that's factual or not, and there's been some press recently about animals losing their lives there. The, the Amur leopard, the pony, the giraffe, the lion, so I think we should be very careful about endorsing that statement. On the top of the next page, uh, there's a line that says, "The zoo has been a self-sufficient facility for the last ten years." That is not really the case. Uh, the zoo has requested and received seventy million dollars in open space trust fund money, and it is still requesting money for the amphitheater from the taxpayer, so it is not totally self-sufficient. The tenth whereas, uh, it says Turtleback Zoo is an economic engine. That may or may not be true. It may actually, in some cases, be an economic destroyer. We've had real estate agents step up at public meetings now and say they think property values are going down in neighborhoods around the zoo due to the traffic and the noise and the commotion. So, we have to be careful, uh, whether or not we endorse that line. The last one, uh, number eleven, whereas, um, the county... The last one, number 11, whereas the county regularly presents plans for improvements to the Turtle Bag Zoo to the West Orange Planning Board, is also not factual. They did not present their plans for the Grizzly Bear exhibit, and they did not present their plans for the amphitheater.
Because there is some-
What I, how I would simply ask you to remedy it is to put at the very beginning of this resolution, the statement, "The Turtle Bag Zoo states the following," so it's really what they're saying, not what we are saying, because we don't know that this is all true. Then the, the resolution would really serve us well if it had a final conclusion that it is the sense of the town that we are not in favor of any further encroachment into the reservation, particularly by the proposed 500-seat amphitheater. I think we need to make it clear to them so that they're not misled or not led on, and I think it's important to be very clear. So this is what I'm hoping, you can make these minor, very minor changes to this resolution, and I think that it will be helpful. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Malanga. Thank you for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am. Hi, Joyce, how are you?
My name is Joyce Rudin from West Orange. I just want to echo a lot of what Sally said. I think that we need to put forth resolutions that are factually based, and if you cannot verify, you as the town council cannot verify that all of these statements that have been asserted in this resolution are factually based and West Orange stands behind that, I would be very careful not to take credit for all of that and allow the county to say that this is how the county presents itself. I also think there's been a lot of work and a lot of talk and a lot of interest in the fact that the Turtle Bag Zoo has continued to expand and expand. It was originally set out to be 15.5 acres. We heard Mr. Puglisi speak publicly the last time he was here, that under our county executive, it has expanded 10 more acres, and this further proposed amphitheater, which has already been funded by the state, the $204 million, could possibly go into our reservation at least another acre. I think the only thing that we really need to state, along with Maplewood, which took the first bold step, is to add one line to this resolution, and that one line would be, "The Township of West Orange opposes any further development or expansion of the Turtle Bag Zoo into the South Mountain Reservation land." I urge each of you to seriously consider adding that one line to this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rudin. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, hi. My name is Gina Palazzolo.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Palazzolo.
Mm-hmm.
P-A-L-A-Z-Z-O-L-O.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm here on a little bit of a different note.
And your address?
I'm sorry, your address. Well, I'm from the Willshire Caterers.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So I wanted to let everybody know, some of you may know because I have been talking to some of the townspeople via Facebook, email, that there will be a new restaurant opening this month. I don't have an exact date yet, and it is called Grill 350. It's going to be inside the Willshire on Pleasant Valley Way. I just wanted to let everybody know that we are all one. Willshire Caterers, Willshire Grand Hotel, Grill 350. We are all one. Me myself, I have been with the Willshire management for over 10 years, and I am now the general manager of the restaurant. And we wanted to bring West Orange something exciting, something different that is really nowhere to be found in this area. So we're going to have something for everyone. We're going to have burgers, bar pies, filets, fish. Everything is going to be made on premise, fresh. The desserts will be homemade. We will have theme nights, we will have craft beer, we will have whiskey specials, we will have Grill 350 signature cocktails that you will only be able to get there, nowhere else. And we want, we wanted this to be kind of a homey, welcoming place for the town to come to after a long day, have a nice dinner, a nice glass of wine, relax and unwind. We're going to have some music, and I think everybody's going to be pleasantly surprised when they open the door and see the inside. It's not, it's not what you're going to think it is.
Cool.
We're going to have affordable pricing. It's not, you know, it's going to look upscale, but we are going to have affordable pricing for everybody. And we hope to follow in the Willshire footsteps in catering for as many years as they have, way back to the Goldman's. So I will keep everybody posted on Facebook and email, and I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Emeline Falcon. I'm representing the DAP, which is a substance abuse-
I'm sorry, excuse me, can you repeat your name and spell it?
Emeline.
Falcon.
Can you spell it for me?
E-M-E-L-Y-N.
Okay.
And then Falcon is F-A-L-C-O-N.
Thank you. And the address?
It's a coalition, Substance Abuse Coalition. It's on 2395 South Center Street in Orange.
Okay, what's the name of the coalition? I'm sorry.
DAP.
DAP, thank you.
So yeah, I'm representing a DAP, which is a substance abuse prevention coalition working throughout Essex County to reduce underage drinking, vaping, and prevention, medication misuse, and abuse by all residents. I just wanted to give a shout out to Police Chief James Abbott for his continuous efforts to reduce substance abuse in West Orange and his support for the permanent prescription medication disposal box that we installed at the, at the police department three years ago. Also, shout out to Officer Brett Wagner for his efforts in reducing the prescription medication misuse and abuse in older adults. Some initiatives we would like to partner with West Orange would be our student athletes' prescription use prevention efforts. We provide a toolkit that has a lot of information on how to prevent and look for warning signs that your child may be misusing prescription medication. We offer free presentations, brochures, flowers that we can give to any recreation center, coaches, parents, and teachers that would be interested in the information. We also have a YTAG, which is a prevention and cessation program for youth 13 to 18 years old, funded by the New Jersey Department of Health. Our goal is to decrease the youth tobacco use and initiation. YTAG promotes change for a healthy New Jersey in varied ways, and policy and ordinance related to reducing young youth vaping would be that we are aware of Belleville is the only municipality in Essex County that has an ordinance passed concerning not selling, excuse me, not selling tobacco and electronic cigarettes or e-cigarettes in town to anyone under the age of 21. And second, requires the local business that sell e-cigarettes to register with Belleville Health Department, and the license a year is 1,200. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just want to say thank you so much for coming. Now, can you give us information, like a website or information and contact?
Yes, we're on Facebook. It's, it's just the DAP Coalition of Essex County. And if anyone has, like, want free resources for anything regarding substance abuse or vaping, I know vaping is a really big thing among the youth right now. If you want, want any free brochures, or we come out to schools, or any meetings to give presentations and give free resources.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Mr. Puglisi?
Good evening. Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing Essex County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. First, I just want to talk about some upcoming events. Tomorrow is September 11th, so at 8:00 a.m., we'll have our annual 9/11 ceremony. Everyone is invited. September 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., is a paper shredding and tire recycling event. Two good hits in one day. That's going to be at our fleet maintenance facility in Cedar Grove, which is 99 West Bradford Avenue. All the items collected that day, paper will be shredded and recycled, and then the used tires will be taken to a recycling facility. Even if the tires have metal rims, we will remove the metal rims and the metal is recycled. And then finally, September 24th is our annual Senior Wellness Day at Cody Arena. That's from 10:00 to 2:00, entirely free event for Essex County senior citizens. We invite everyone to come out. It's a great one-stop center where seniors can get information about how to stay active and involved in their community, live independently. Fun day with a lot of music, entertainment, and food. So I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments that were made by some previous speakers about Turtle Bag Zoo. First of all, as far as animal care, the zoo is accredited by three nationally recognized associations, the Association of Zoos and Aquarians, the Zoological Association of America, and Americ- America...
Humane.
Humane, thank you. Sorry, I had a little senior moment there. So we wouldn't get that accreditation if we didn't meet their standards. We are inspected regularly by these agencies. It is unfortunate that some animals do perish, but in the instance, instances that were raised, the animals died of natural causes or during medical procedures, and if they didn't have those medical procedures, they would have died anyway. When we talk about the zoo being self-sufficient, that includes all revenue that comes into the zoo, so that, yeah, that does include admission fees, that does include grants that we receive, and includes revenue that we receive from McLunes, from the Treetop Adventure Course, and also the Mini Golf Course. If you look at zoos across the country, a lot of zoos do not, are not profit-making entities, so without these additional attractions, they would not survive. So that's what we mean when we say self-sufficiency. We believe it is an economic engine with all the goods and services that the zoo needs to operate. A lot of local businesses do have contracts at the zoo, and then there's a lot of restaurants. I mean, we, McLunes is on our site, but quite frankly, people sometimes don't like McLunes. That's their prerogative. So a lot of local restaurants do benefit from the 900,000 visitors that come to visit the site, both that site and also Cody Arena. There's another million people who come to that facility a year. The planning board, we always present plans as a courtesy review, and the one thing I guess maybe that hasn't been brought across is that this is when the plan is nearing completion. The amphitheater to date hasn't even been designed. The contract that was given, that was awarded to the engineering firm covered a wide scope of services, starting with surveying the property to see if first it was feasible, then designing it, then helping us through the construction and so forth. So we're still really at the very beginning of the design stage phase, so there really is nothing to present to anyone at this point, except the concept, which is a 500-seat amphitheater with some space for animals to be kept before they are part of a educational presentation. The Grizzly Bear exhibit, of course, was never presented to the planning board because it was never designed. Again, that we can't present something that there is no design of. And by the way, that was officially withdrawn from Green Acres, so we are no longer being considered for funding for that project. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further comments from the general public, I close the comment. I open the floor to my council colleagues, Councilwoman Petrovia.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and speaking this evening. I'm ready to do whatever the council wants to do with this resolution on, on the zoo.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Sure. Thanks, Joe. I think the only thing I see, and Anthony, thank you for clarifying the comments that were made, I feel like I'm not going to, I'm not in favor of changing anything in the resolution because the part that I wanted to stress the most is the fact that we want to see a master plan before any further development occurs at the zoo. And the only word that I do see that's missing in that resolution is "any further development." So it says, so if it's possible to just add that word, "any further development," I think it was in the, thank you. Mike Brick walked out with my resolution. Let me find out where it is. It's on the last page. Page three. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council, Township of West Orange, that the county provide a master plan prior to any further development plans for the Turtle Bag Zoo, along with the traffic study, and be further resolved that Essex County adhere to all DEP, soil conservation, other, and other environmental protection and erosion guidelines when any new exhibits or amenities are created. So it's really just that word "any" because everything else is already embedded in this about the traffic study, environmental impact, that's what we talked about. So there would really be no more encroaching until we see the master plan. And Mike walked off with my resolution, so thank you for sharing. I wanted to thank Suzanne, I think for, I guess we have seen for over 10 years now when Mickey Wagner started West Orange Cares, when her son was deployed, Mickey is in our fire department, when her son was deployed, started West Orange Cares. And you could hear Suzanne, if you follow Suzanne on Facebook, you could hear her sheer labor of love that this project has taken on. And again, for over 10 years that we have been, the community has an outpouring of donations, but I'm glad that you stressed the part about the shipping because though you might have a living room or a garage full of boxes, they do need to be packaged and shipped as well. So that's part of the donation. So if you're not, if you're not going to donate hygiene supplies or whatever else is on that list, checks are always welcome to ship, ship out the supplies. Thank you, Suzanne, for your commitment. And welcome, Gina, thank you for coming down. So at 7:45 this morning at a West Orange Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, we talked about welcoming Grill 350. You need to provide us with a date so that we can have a ribbon cutting there. And, and you're absolutely right, there is a total renovation of this. Prima Bear was a beautiful, elegant restaurant. Does not look like that anymore. It's, it's wide open and spacious, and it's still beautiful, and it's a magnificent building. So we just wish you a lot of wealth, a lot, and, and welcome. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Falcon, I'm not sure, yeah, thank you. So you recognize the police department, you know, they were very actively involved with the Operation Hope program here in West Orange, with the angels being on call 24 hours a day for any type of drug treatment, trying to provide placement for residents or any really, any individual that calls for treatment. So, you know, we do need to collaborate. The next Open Hope, Operation Hope meeting that we have, maybe you can do a presentation there. So I really would like you to leave your contact information with our municipal clerk so that we can coordinate our efforts. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Maturow.
Yes, I'm going to keep it brief so that we can move on with our agenda items. Certainly want to thank all of our advocates, as always, Ms. Rudin, Ms. Malanga, I know Mike Brick is already gone, for your continued advocacy and persistence in our preservation of our South Mountain Reservation. So thank you for that. I'll reserve my comments till we discuss the resolution. Gina, we look forward to coming to see Thursday nights, which is- Gina, we look forward to coming to see Thursday nights, which is typically an evening where we used to go to Prima Vera, so I will look forward to that again. You guys have a really high bar to meet, but looking forward to, thank you for coming to share the information. Emmeline, thank you as well for coming to speak. This is something that is prevalent among youth, particularly the vape cigarette, and I'll echo with my council colleagues have already said your contact information so that, particularly since now the municipal alliance is working to put a grant together, your information would be, and your input would be really helpful to us. So before you leave, thank you. Let's see. Suzanne, thank you so much for always taking the time. I can't imagine how challenging it is for you when you do hear something in the news and wait with bated breath just to make sure that everything is okay. But I'm sure this gives you some constant, some consolences, right? That you're doing something to make others feel better. So thank you for that effort, and I will come out on the day that you're at the farmer's market. It's a great space to be. Thank you. I think that is it for me. Again, I'll reserve my comments when we discuss the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino.
I'll start with Suzanne. Thank you for all you do, and I know your heart and soul is in this project. I also want to thank you, on a personal note, you've been in my appointment to the Human Relations Commission, and I know Tammy's going to miss you. You just stepped down from that, from all your other commitments, which I can commend you for because sometimes, you know, we run our plate. But you have been instrumental in that commission, and we thank you so much for your service and all that you continue doing. I know this working with the troops, since you and Dylan came to that school board meeting many years ago, and I sat there and brought us our fabulous, our fabulous ROTC program idea that turned into a reality. So, you know, thank you, and look forward to whatever assistance that you need. And Tammy, now that you're there, you're behind Suzanne before, I didn't get to thank you earlier for all that you're doing this week. I know it's very time-consuming, and you're very passionate, and this is unfortunately close to home for you. And we appreciate the awareness, and it's getting out there. People, you have people talking about it, and that's what needs to be done. People can't be afraid to talk about, you know, what goes on with certain mental health issues, and awareness is key and it's important. So kudos, nice job. And I know you'll be working very hard this week. Gina, very excited. I look forward to coming down. Always great to have a new restaurant. Trying to put a restaurant week together this year with our Public Relations Commission. So we're really excited about that. Once we find a week, I will be down to visit you. So hopefully you'll be a good participant for us. So lots of luck with your opening, and can't wait to stop by. And Emmeline, thank you for coming down. I just had a conversation with Chief Abbott today about the vaping. Every morning, turning on the news and hearing another young person's lungs collapsing is just sickening. And, you know, we have kids in middle school, and it's out of control. And good news is, West Orange, just like Bellevue, we pass ordinance, so you can't buy the products. But, you know, let's face it, some of these products that are being sold aren't even being sold in the stores. They're just being sold by individuals, which we have to find a way to stop that because it's endangering our youth, and it really needs to stop. So if you could just send us an email to the West Orange Council so we all have your information. You know, we all have different activities that we do within the township. I'm the school board liaison, so I work closely with them, and we'll get you to the right people in the township. So we commend you on all the work that you do. And in regards to the, did I cover everything else but the, in regards to the resolution for the zoo, I guess we'll wait till we discuss that because I'm going to be pulling that item. I don't want to surprise my colleagues then. I won't be supporting this this evening for various reasons, which I'll go into. I commend the efforts that, you know, whichever colleague members put into this for us and the environmental commission. It's nothing to be disrespectful. It's just the, I'll explain it later. There's different parts to this, which I'd like to go over, but now's not the time to discuss. I'll discuss it when we get to, when I ask to pull it in a few minutes. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. I'd like to thank Mike Brick for being here. I'm sorry he wasn't here. Susan, you know, I can't repeat constantly, but what everybody has said here is so true. And we're very fortunate for you and your family for what you do, that you do care. Not because of just Dylan alone, but you do care for our service members, and we thank you, and we support you, and just keep us in a loop with what we have to do, put us to work and things, but thank you. And of course, always send Dylan our best. Evelyn, you know, we have this ordinance, and we appreciate you coming tonight. She's not going to be able to sit here. So it's something that we're very careful for, and thank you for your understanding. But we were one of the first municipalities to be concerned about that, and it's part of our ordinance and regulations. So we hope you keep up on it and keep active, and let the council know if we can help you with anything. If something you really want to pursue, please reach out to us. We're here to help you. I got to sit on anything else. To the comments about Turtleback Zoo, and people here spoke about facts and being factual for what's in it. Turtleback Zoo is an economic engine. Basically, we as a township have not utilized. We need to use it to generate additional revenues and misses in that corridor, and that would be a benefit to the Township of West Orange with ratables and keep people here within the township. Secondly of all is, I, every real estate agent I talk to says, people always ask about the zoo and find it a positive. There were 18 people looking for houses on my block this past week, and everybody knocked on our doors saying, is it really true the zoo is right up here? We're really excited because we have young kids. Let's be factual. You can be, feel, you know, and housing values are not going down because of Turtleback Zoo. They're not. Okay, maybe the only thing is salt that's affecting any housing sales. But from a real estate vendor and I spoke to, they say it's not a problem. They find it as a plus for the community. And when I watch some of the people, what they say in the Star Ledger and on Channel 2 News, totally wrong, totally misleading. And that's something that you're going to have to feel, that you want to be factual, be factual. Okay? But I want to make a comment. I wrote a comment that I want to make about this resolution. I have to read it because I did it on my way, so I have to read it. I believe our responsibility is to work with the county to see that South Mountain Reservation and the recreational complex provides for cultural, educational, and recreational enjoyment by the public, the entire public, all 880,000 residents of the County of Essex. And at the same time, preserve and support the reservation's ecosystem. We recognize that this is a balancing act, requiring ongoing attention to meet the Olmsted Brothers, and I hope you all know who the Olmsted Brothers were, designed Central Park, the whole thing. So with the Olmsted Brothers intent, that the reservation be both, be both preserved and, and used by the general public. The reservation and recreational complex has received regional recognition for its year-round programming and resources. I believe it attracts prospective residents and visitors and may provide an economic benefit to the West Orange Township in the long run. The county is fully aware that the reservation's popularity has caused the traffic on Northville Avenue to become challenging and at times, but the traffic, which is not all of the time, has not reduced property values in the area. In fact, young families have moved here because of the proximity to the zoo and reservation. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda, please.
Okay. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, and executive session of August 13, 2019. Consent. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman McCarty.
I'd like to pull Resolution, Agenda Item K, Resolution 223-19. It's a resolution that would authorize us giving $8,000 to Luna Stage.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Councilwoman McCartney.
I don't, but I do want to thank the clerk because, again, when I said I pushed that button for the Sustainable Jersey application at 11:47 PM, in time for midnight, this resolution, supporting the participation in the Sustainable Jersey Municipal Program, needed to be on there. So I appreciate the late addition, and thank you for getting that.
Anything else, Councilwoman? Councilwoman McChuprow.
I am pulling Resolution 22019.
Okay. 22019, Councilwoman?
Yes, it's just a discussion on the Viscaia condominium association.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else? Councilwoman, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes, 221, the resolution regarding the Turtleback Zoo, and I had questions on the other two resolutions that were just pulled.
Okay. Why don't we do your questions, Councilwoman Castellino?
We pulled the others. She has questions on.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, so they're pulled, so I'm good.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Okay. Let's start with Councilwoman McCarty.
No, 220, no, 220-19 was pulled by.
220-19, I'm sorry.
By Councilwoman McChuprow.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Resolution authorizing the township to execute a municipal services agreement with Viscaia condominiums regarding the reimbursement for municipal services and resolving Viscaia's claim for reimbursement of municipal services since 2008, 2008. 2018.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to provide an opportunity to have this explained in open public. I understand that there was a claim made by Viscaia that lasted the span of 2008, a reimbursement claim from 2008 to 2018. And so there has been an agreement made, and then there's also a shared service agreement. Can you just briefly summarize that for everyone, please?
I'm going to.
Oh, thank you, Mark.
I was involved. We negotiated and then wrote it, so we're going to.
So you're the best person to do that. I mean, and just, just to clarify, the agreement, the scope of the agreement is going to cover 67 lights and six hydrants and some trash collection.
That's correct.
Okay, so if you can just.
So under New Jersey statute, municipalities are required to provide certain services to their residents, the taxpayers. Lighting, snow plowing, garbage, the typical things that you would affect. So private communities, oftentimes, they basically take care of those services on their own, and they bill their residents for them. But what the statute provides for is they can seek reimbursement for the township for some of those expenses. Not at the rate that they pay, but essentially what the cost would be had those communities been included as part of the general services that the township provided. This was an instance where, basically, there was never sort of a request for reimbursement going back from 2018. So suddenly, we were asked to reimburse them for about 10 years' worth of reimbursement, 11 years of reimbursements. Obviously, not something that was budgeted for, was, you know, so ultimately, what it came down to was we negotiated that instead of going paying all 10 of those years, that we'd be paying six of the 10 years, broken up those installment payments. Moving forward, Viscaia specifically wasn't for all of the services. Now, we do collect their garbage, so our vendors do provide certain services already, so those are not really relevant, related, although the agreement provides for what their services will be moving forward. As far as the lighting and the snow plowing goes, basically, it just sets the formula in which how those are going to be calculated. And it basically comes down to sort of total number of lights, basically the total expense for electricity, for street lighting, divided by number of lights, and then you multiply that by the number of lights they have. As far as the snow plowing, it's total cost of snow plowing divided by mileage of streets, and then you take that number and multiply it. So it sort of sets that formula moving forward. And again, it just requires us to basically, as part of resolving the prior claims, to make certain installment payments for, I believe, three years for the next reimbursement periods.
So the reimbursement is, what, the 18,000 change? Per year? Okay. Otherwise, what would have a total, 10 years?
10 years worth, right. So it's basically.
Lots.
Lots. Well, thank you for your work on this. It was interesting to read how you came up with the breakdown of the mileage and what everything represented. It was quite, quite a settlement, an agreement, so I appreciate that. Thank you. That was my question.
Councilwoman. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Oh, I had a question on this. So my, I guess my question is, why, and I appreciate all your hard work, Mark, and thank you, but why, why hasn't been done sooner, like when the building was first built?
The reality is, it's sort of on the developers to kind of come and say, hey, we need a visual service agreement, because, quite frankly, they have the right to privately contract whatever they want. So until they come to us and say, hey, we want reimbursement, we have no idea what's going on.
Okay. Thank you, I was just curious.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Oh, Councilwoman McCarty.
Just got a couple of questions. I had asked these questions previously, but they weren't answered. I just wanted to ask a question about some of the wording in the proposed document because it doesn't seem to make sense to me, and I just didn't want to leave it if it wasn't correct.
Okay.
And the first paragraph of Article 1 of the agreement. Section C.
I did review your comments. Basically, just a word was omitted from that last sentence.
Okay.
The word "for" should be probably even put in between the word "reimbursement" and.
Okay, so that, at some point, I just think that needs to be put in. It's minor, but it's, it's not correct. I'm sorry, just. I wanted to know if adding the services to, essentially, the reimbursement services to the town's budget, is that going to increase the costs that we pay to any of these vendors, in particular for refuse and recycling and the water mains?
Well, so the water mains is privately contracted, so that, that's New Jersey American Water, so they handle that. So whatever billing, that's them. As far as the solid waste refuge, we've already been collecting certain solid waste already, so it wouldn't change that at all.
Okay.
Our only increase in this will be, will be the payments. We're not, we're not increasing the level of service.
Right, okay. So it's, and it's not, it's not increasing our operating costs, but it is, but it is adding to our reimbursement, which we do for all of the, most of the.
Correct.
Yes, we do it for everyone. I just wanted to ask about water mains. I understand that it is a, a private contract, but the question is, are we going to start paying for the water mains when we hadn't been previously?
I don't believe.
If, either, and we were talking about this today, whether, whether we actually already are or not, and that's something we're going to look at. If we are, we would be billed that directly. It would, we actually wouldn't be going through an agreement like this.
Right. So ultimately, what would happen would be, either they've been getting billed directly from New Jersey American Water, then it just basically gets transferred to us.
Okay. So that is going to add to our.
It may have already occurred. That really, it's kind of, I don't want to say it's transparent, but I mean, it just, it happens in their normal billing cycle. Usually, they just move them over to us because they are our responsibility, either way you look at it.
And it's not major to boot.
Today, we couldn't determine before tonight whether or not that it already occurred.
Okay. It's only six, so, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
Because when we see the list from the other private communities on the reimbursement, we usually have that on our resolution. Is the water mains broken out? I've never, I don't ever remember seeing.
No, because we pay them, it's not water mains, it's. No, because we pay them, it's not water mains, this is for the--
Hydrants.
Hydrants, for the fire hydrants.
Oh, the hydrants.
Right.
The hydrants, sorry.
You know, we don't pay their water mains or their--
That's what I thought you were saying, yeah.
No, this is for the fire--
This is for the fire.
Which is an outrageous amount of--
Is it okay? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 220-19?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 221-19 was pulled by Councilwoman Castellino. It is the resolution regarding the Turtleback Zoo expansion.
Okay, so, let me start by stating a couple, couple items. One, I deeply appreciate my colleagues who worked on this resolution for taking their time and the environmental commission. So by not moving to support this this evening, it isn't disrespecting in any way, it's just my own way of thinking. I also want to thank all the advocates for coming out to inform us, and the emails we received in regards of your concerns. With that being said, Anthony, I thank you also, because I've been on the phone with you, had numerous communications. So, let me go back. So, the zoo, growing up in town and enjoying the zoo, started out as a petting zoo, and it was just a place of enjoyment to go. When my kids got older, going there and seeing the condition that zoo was in from the former county administration was pitiful. It was sad. Being on the Rotary Club about 10 years ago, and when some real progress was being made, Rotary Club would be one of the sponsors of one of the first exhibits that was refurbished. And I got to know, going, having staff members from the zoo coming, Jeremy, or I forget his name, Dr. Jeremy, coming to the Rotary meetings, all the care that was given to the animals, and just having that opportunity to be involved on that level and visiting the site. With that being said, I understand the concerns and the passion that's out there. I just, a few years ago, when, last time we ran, Councilman, my colleagues, Councilwoman Krokoviac and Guarino could attest to this, one of the debate questions was, how would you improve your relationship with working with the county? And I felt at that time, and I feel that this time, is by having constant communication and dialogue with them. And with that being said, we've had great strides. Councilwoman Guarino, you've done wonderful things with your pedestrian safety committee with them and the communication. So what I do, I can't speak for my colleagues, is I pick up the phone, I call some of our freeholders, I bother Anthony Paglisi constantly, Mr. Sayers to make phone calls, and, because my concerns, obviously, the traffic issues has been a big impact in the St. Cloud area. So I'm hoping that this parking garage, which will be completed soon, will help that impact, and if not, my thoughts or my feelings are known that it needs to be revisited. We have to make sure a new traffic study gets done. So with having dialogue and talking, I, as an elective official, I have a tough time telling other bodies of government how to do their job. And I feel this resolution does that. I have no problem picking up the phone and having conversations, but to publicly pass a resolution to tell you that you have to give me a master plan, that you have to do an environmental study, which they do. I also didn't know that an engineering report wasn't complete when we met last time. As Anthony said earlier, that an engineering report was done, and they don't have the site yet. So I think, I appreciate all the advocacy on this, but I have to have a little faith that they're gonna do the right thing, and if they don't, I would then revisit maybe having to go with the resolution. So I'd like to see us table this this evening, especially because we have members of the community that aren't even happy with some of the language in here. Again, that's my own personal feelings with this. It's not disrespectful to members of the audience or my colleagues, but, you know, for the past 14 years that I've been governing, I've just, you know, I think it's important to keep dialogue and communication and not to have to write a resolution to tell another governing body how to behave. I hope, faith, I would hope the county would come to us and, with their master plan, and with, and with this plan when it comes to our planning board, because we have processes in place. I know there is, or not that I didn't know, I learned that the county has their own environmental commission that these reports go to. What I said, what I didn't know is that we could send a liaison there. Councilwoman, I'm not sure if that's been done. Did we do that already now?
Ms. Joe was there?
Okay, so, 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 again, it has nothing to be disrespectful, I'm just having trouble passing this resolution. Not to say that I'm not advocating on the traffic issues or any environmental issues, or I'm not gonna keep close to, you know, keep the lines of communication open, but I just have trouble, and it's my own personal issue, with passing a resolution on another --
My turn.
--governing body, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Of course, you know, I like to thank the residents that come and speak their mind, and I have great respect for them, they know I do. They know I support a lot of the projects they want to forge, especially with preservation of open space and our trees and all that. And that I respect you greatly for, and I admire you for that, and I know our community does. But I believe, like, when people start saying things about traffic, yes, the county will learn from their mistakes on traffic. Hopefully, the parking deck will alleviate a number of, especially from the circling, but also it was because of Pacific holidays. Also, the traffic study that I requested will let people know that a lot of the traffic isn't occurring because of the Turtleback Zoo, it's happening as a pass-through, because people are going through West Orange, up Northville Avenue to Livingston, to Madison, Florham Park, they're using it as a pass-through. The same thing with Pleasant Valley Way. People use Pleasant Valley Way to go from Bloomfield Avenue to 280 and toward the side. So let's get all our ducks in a row, and that's why we asked for the information. I am confident the county will take the necessary steps to do it. I believe Turtleback Zoo is a great asset to our community, but remember, you're talking as if it's, you're only caring about West Orange residents. I care about West Orange residents, but do remember, we don't own the reservation, the township of West Orange doesn't. All of us own the reservation and the zoo. It's owned by 880,000 residents. And comments I hear from certain people, you say, well, they are coming here. I'd like to know who you mean by "they." I get very offended when I hear comments and I hear interviews and things like that. We are a community. It happens to house a reservation, actually, two reservations. It happens to house a zoo, and an educational center, and a skating facility, and a recreational facility. This is what we do. But do remember, I trust the county has the proper people, and they will address it. They're not gonna tear down a reservation. The reservation wasn't created to be looked at, it was created to be used for recreational, cultural, and experience. Then you could say the same thing about the walking path, let's take the walking path out, because what did that do? That had an effect on the ecosystem, that was a reservoir. But the county made the effort to clean it up of a reservoir that was totally polluted and not usable, now to an area where people can come and fish, people can come and walk, they walk their dogs, too. But that's what I'm saying. I'm not anti-you or anything else, I'm saying, give the benefit, and that's why this resolution. We gotta be professional and courteous, we can't be demanding, we can't accuse the county administration of being thieves, because, you know, first of all, you shouldn't do that, that's not being professional and courteous. You can get more from honey, just like we got the light at Alyssa Drive. We worked in a courteous and professional way with the county. We brought in the Board of Education and the Township Council. Now we have a traffic system on Pleasant Valley Way that's slowing down the traffic. It's making it a safer roadway for our pedestrians, for our drivers, and especially for our high school students. You have to treat people the way, like my father used to tell me, and like my wife continues to tell me, you have to say, you have to talk to people the way you want to be treated, and the punishment must fit the crime. But that's what I'm looking for. I believe the county has the township and the whole county's best interest. You can't just say it's for West Orange, it's for the entire population of the County of Essex. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Michelle, I didn't expect that, because, and I hear what you're saying, but trying to tell someone else what to do. But I feel that, you know, because this came out of the environmental commission, that really, all we're asking, really, and we are being civil and we're actually glorifying the county for the work that they have done, I, to me, all we're asking is for them to prioritize their plans. And you just heard, we don't have a grizzly bear, that's--
Yeah.
Right? We don't have the amphitheater plans. All we're asking, they do come to, courtesy hearings, they do come to the planning board, what, the gist to me of what I was trying to stress is that, before you come to the planning board with any courtesy hearing, review, we want to see a master plan. We have been asking for that. So before they eat into any of the acreage that's up there, we're asking for a master plan, so we can see what the conceptual idea is for the plan. So I don't think that's really, it's telling them what to do, but it's just requesting, we're prioritizing what they bring before the planning board. And we have been asking for the master plan for, I guess, about a year now. I'm looking at Robert, so you would know the dates. I don't feel that it's really telling them what to do, it's really a request to prioritize what comes before the planning board.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Yes, thank you. A couple of notes in response to some of the comments. Ms. Rudin and Ms. Malanga, Ms. Malanga pointed out, and I should not have taken off my reading glasses. I agree that we should convey the community's understanding and feeling on the continued development of the zoo. That's what we were elected to do. We don't always make the decisions because they're personal to us. Sometimes, we don't agree, but we ask for your vote, and that trust in your vote to represent your voices. And to me, that's first and foremost. When I read the resolution, there was some language here that didn't sit with me well, and I think, Ms. Rudin, you expressed it best when suggesting that we should not state what the county has done. I'm comfortable in saying that, you know, in the whereas clauses, because I have not vetted any of these whereas clauses. I've lived here for 20 years, I have, you know, benefited from the zoo, but I've also been stuck in that massive traffic for quite some time. So there's pros and cons, but I would like to consider changing the language with respect to, you know, whereas, the county states or the Turtleback Zoo states the following, that's, you know, something that, you know, I think we should do. It's not, we haven't vetted any of that. It's something that, you know, has been stated, and I'm sure there's records of it, possibly in the binder that we got this week, but we were not able to read. I think that is a minor change. And I don't think, to Councilwoman Castellino's point, that passing a resolution is telling another agency what to do. But I think that, yes, we are elected officials, but we are also constituents and who have elected a Board of Chosen Freeholders and the county executive to represent our needs and our voices as well. And I think, and I've always said this, I believe in the power of the people, and the more voices that come together in unison to say we all have and share these concerns because we share these concerns, it's not unplausible to say we want to press pause until a master plan is given. And when I was doing my research, it was requested initially in December of 2018--
There you go.
--and followed, and then the county did immediately get together a public input session within months, February of the following year, there was a public input session. So this is not me saying I doubt what the county can and can't do, or will and won't do. The county has done, you know, tremendous improvements to schools and that I've been in, and parks. I just think that at this point, when we're looking at an Amazon burning, and, you know, the highest record-setting heat in the last five years has been, you know, happened here, there is a concern with how much we take away from our open space, you know? We have, you know, children, hopefully grandchildren, and others to come after us. It's our responsibility morally to say, wait, let's just, you know, it might just be another acre. I'm hoping, honestly, what happens is that, once the plan has been developed, that the county executive and the Board of Chosen Freeholders and their own conservation board say, you know, we don't have to expand an acre, we can do it within the confines of the existing footprint of the zoo. But I do support this resolution inasmuch as, on page three, as Councilwoman McCartney pointed out, you know, it does ask them, with the addition of no further development of the Turtleback Zoo, which mimics and mirrors the Maplewood Resolution, which our council president last meeting time we were here, asked if we would support, and we agreed to support that with that language. So I'm okay supporting this resolution, but I agree with Councilwoman McCartney where we have to add no further, or any further development.
It's actually in there, I think this is not the latest revision. Do you have-- Mike Brick and my husband Joe walked off with my resolutions. I don't think this is the one that we have in here, is not the very latest one that came out.
Can we have one before we vote on it, then, if it's not?
Is it, though? Is it? Let me see the one that's dated.
Otherwise, I'm gonna support a table.
So you don't know if he sent me a revision?
Well, we can compare.
Yeah, you sent a revision.
That was the revision.
Is it the latest version?
Oh, I don't know about that, I just--
When was it?
All right, so this was September, oh, that's what I just said, September 9, 11:13 AM. And really, the revision was any further development, and that's in there.
Well, we could, I mean, look, we could--
In the environmental-- And that's really-- Right, that was the change in September 9.
You're changed.
If that was the only change, that's it. Yeah.
The county needs to have a plan to preserve or adjust the review of consideration.
It's in the first paragraph of the last page. The first paragraph of the last page, right? It says, it says that the county provide a master plan prior to further development plans for the Turtleback Zoo along with the traffic study.
Yeah, there it is.
That's the comment.
Yeah, you got, I sent the email yesterday.
Well, I think the point that, I think the point that the residents were making was that--
They don't want any more.
They're focusing on the potential encroachment, further encroachment of the reservation. That's what they were talking about. That's not in here, it's not in the revised version that we got-- after we got the paper, the initial--
Council President? Yes. Frankly, and it doesn't matter, but adding any to that sentence doesn't change the meaning of the sentence, it's still the same.
It doesn't change the intent.
You know, well, it really doesn't change anything at all, as far as I'm concerned. My high school English teacher would tell me to take that word, any out-- My high school English teacher would tell me to take that word any out because it's unnecessary. But notwithstanding that, I don't care if you want to add it. But whatever language you choose to add or subtract, you need to make, somebody needs to make a motion, needs to be specific so that Mr. Moon can take it down because this is on his firm's computer, and the change ultimately will be made after you vote on the addition or subtraction or modification.
Okay.
It's already in there. It is already in there.
It is in the bottom. On page two, actually. I'm done.
Okay. Are we ready?
No, I.
I'm sorry, yes.
I'd like to clarify my, I'd like to clarify something, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Okay. Unless Councilwoman Kocovia would like to speak?
I'm not good.
So again, I understand the resolution and my role as a councilwoman advocating for our constituents. I myself like to do things in a meeting setting when it involves our other governing bodies. I was very effective through the years when I was on the school board, talking to council members, and from when I moved from the council, talking to our colleagues over the school board with, you know, when the public hasn't been happy or they have concerns in being able to have a reasonable remedy without having to pass a resolution. So I understand why you want to do this, but I don't want the public to think for any moment that I'm not concerned about the traffic, any environmental issues. I do that with phone calls, with meetings. I had asked Mr. Pagliisi to set up meetings. I met, I talked to some of our freeholders and to get a better understanding. They're not that far along in the process. And I have to say that maybe some of, you know, some of the public comments and folks coming to the meetings may have changed plans. I don't know. But I just want to, there be understanding that I do relate the concerns of the public in another fashion. And I think that helps build good relationship with partnerships with other governing bodies. And again, that's the only reason why I'm not supporting this resolution today. I wouldn't want the school board or the county to pass a resolution on us. And I don't mind asking them. In fact, I don't understand why we didn't formally ask them with a letter for the information. So I guess this is a way.
The planning board did.
The planning board did.
Yes.
But the master plan's not completed yet.
Right.
So.
That's what we're waiting for.
That's what we're asking.
That's what you're wait, yeah, well, you can't get something that you haven't. So that's why I don't understand why we're, like, why don't you wait till they complete them?
We don't want them to go forward with anything else before we see the master plan.
But you sent that, you sent them a letter from the planning board. So why doesn't that stop there? Why are we, it's coming here? Like, the planning board.
What we're saying is that we don't want them to come have a courtesy hearing for anything else before we finally see.
I understand that, but why didn't that go from the, from the planning board? I'm just trying to follow the process with, you're asking for something that isn't completed yet. So it's not like they didn't give it to us, they just haven't completed it yet.
Right.
Okay. Anyway, that's my own personal, but I don't want there to be a misconception. I haven't been advocating for our residents, especially in regards to the traffic issues because I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 221-19?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 223-19, resolution authorizing the township to enter into a memorandum of grant agreement with Luna Stage whereby the township shall provide a grant of $8,000 towards arts education programs to be provided by Luna Stage. This was pulled by Councilwoman Kocovia.
I am a great supporter of Luna Stage. They are wonderful, small theater. If anyone has any interest in theater at all, they should be on your to-go list because it's a small intimate theater. They do a lot of new works. They get actors and other professionals who do off-Broadway and work all over, not only New York City, but also literally the world. And it's a great, it's a great theater. The program for this coming season is wonderful. It's based on roughly, loosely on immigrant experience and a sort of a related one, an outsider experience. And the program sounds wonderful. So I encourage people to consider it. However, we just, the council majority voted on a budget that raised our property taxes eight and a half percent this year. $8,000 seems to me to be a substantial sum that we shouldn't be spending in a year like this. And so I'm, just pulled it so that I could vote against it.
Thank you, Councilman.
So I believe, Council President, yes, thank you. I believe that this is already in our budget, so this is something that we did support. I don't remember if you voted no during the budget hearing on this, but we did vote to have this put in our budget.
Yes.
John, maybe you can help us with that?
Actually, it was in the mayor's requested budget, but then I found funds in a trust fund account that we can use. So actually, there are no tax dollars, no taxpayer dollars involved in this appropriation.
Excellent. It's even better.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino? I don't want to miss any votes.
So that was my question, because I thought it was a grant, so there wasn't, I just, my question was, are there any, is there any match from the township for the grant?
These are, your funds are coming from the township to grant to Luna Stage. It's not, it's not a grant we're receiving.
Okay.
It is a grant we're giving to them. It's in, and like, as I mentioned before, it was in the mayor's original request for the budget, but I found alternative funds in a trust fund to use for it, so there'll be no taxpayer dollars.
Okay, okay, better yet, okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 223-19?
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 2582-19, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section 54 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Mayor's Program for the Uniquely Gifted. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance, on second and final reading, ordinance 2582-19? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open comment to my council colleagues. Anyone on the council have any comments about this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve on second and final reading, 2582? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorello.
Yes.
Sorello. Oh, my God.
What did she, what did she say?
Nothing. She said, "Gorino."
That's a blast from the past.
Who?
She said, "Councilman."
I'm sorry.
2583-19, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain Township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee's status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2583-19? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open comment to my council colleagues. Any comments? Seeing, oh, yes, Councilman?
I was just going to explain to people, it's just amending our ordinance to reflect some recent changes in the 2019 budget and a couple of error corrections. It's not, not major.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2583-19?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. I said it right this time.
2584-19, bond ordinance for various capital improvements in and by the Township of West Orange in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $8,240,866, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $7,848,441 bonds or notes of the township of, I'm sorry, of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I had a question.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Actually, a couple of questions. I know that when we did our budget, we discussed the replacement of the Ospac sound system, and that is here listed.
Bond ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, is this?
There's one easy there for them.
Yes, but what we're looking at here. Is this the breakdown of?
That is the breakdown, that is the breakdown of what's in the ordinance.
Yes, of what's in the ordinance, yes. So I just wanted a clarification with respect to the total amount of, only because I, okay, so the amount requested for this is $315,000, and then what is recommended is $100,000, correct?
What, what page?
On page, I believe it's two.
That's for, oh, for Ospac, yes.
For Ospac, so it's $100,000 that we're giving Ospac, well, not giving Ospac.
Budgeting.
Budgeting for, but not that that's all going to be expended, or it may.
Well, realistically, probably at least $60,000 to $70,000 it may be, it may, you know, so $100,000, is it possible when we're done and it ends up near there? It's possible.
Okay.
It's not going to, we felt very strongly it wasn't going to end up at 300.
No. Okay. And only because we did, I just want to be clear that we did discuss this during the budget hearing, and we talked about contributing, I think, at least $50,000. And then the recreation, the participatory budget project for O'Connor Park Special Needs is also on here. Happy to see that that's on there. Outdoor facility improvements, what I, I just wanted to, and I'm going to blanketly ask, because I looked through it, but just in case I missed it, there are no bumper cars in here, are there?
No.
All right, I just want to be sure, because I'm not.
Just fixing the rain.
And I.
Nothing like that.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. And the pump stations I see are also in here, which we discussed. Okay, those are, that was, that was it for me. So I can go ahead, and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino, actually, I'm supposed to go to the next section, then you have a question, but that's okay, nobody's going to ask a question.
No, no, that's, wait, wait, wait.
We're in the middle of voting to introduce the.
Introduce, right, and then you can ask.
It's okay, go ahead, it's fine, go ahead.
I didn't miss it, then, okay, because then the public.
This is a two-step, actually, two, there's introduction, then there's.
I was doing an introduction.
Public comment.
Yeah.
It's okay.
We got halfway through.
Correct. So you got to finish the introduction.
Yeah, finish that.
But we did the introduction.
Right, that's, but, it's okay, it's.
No, it's fine.
It's fine.
Can I finish the introduction?
Yes, you can finish.
And then we'll go through. Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
An introduction?
Yes, and Council President Garino?
Yes. Well, you didn't say my name, my name.
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did? Is there, is there anyone here from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. When I saw the proposed capital budget, I went back and reviewed the mayor's PowerPoint budget presentation and looked at the 2019 approved budget, municipal budget, and I have some questions about this capital budget. First off, the mayor presented a slide back in June entitled "Two-Year Budgeting Plan B Capital Budget" that indicated an $8 million capital budget and an additional $6 million for road resurfacing. The slide then listed about 10 different initiatives for capital spending. Subsequently, the municipal budget approved by a council majority included about $733,000 for the capital improvement fund, which happens to be 5% of $14 million, eight plus six. And that's actually the total amount of the mayor's proposed capital projects and the required down payment for capital improvement bonds of $14 million. The proposal tonight, however, is for an $8.2 million capital budget. And with the exception of $3 million for road resurfacing, which is only half of what was presented in the two-year budget proposal, all of the other items on the mayor's slide, and then some, are covered in this year's capital budget. A rough count is more than 60 individual capital improvement projects in town this year. But even after all of that, it appears there will still be about $340,000 or $50,000 left over in the 2019 capital improvement fund. So I was wondering if perhaps Mr. Gross could explain what is planned for that remaining $340,000, $50,000 in the municipal budget. In addition, I did have a few questions on some of the proposed projects. First off, I noted that Councilwoman Matute Brown just asked about the O'Connor Park ice rink. I see that there's $70,000 allocated to construct a watertight facility at that ice rink, and I, you know, I too had the question about whether those were anticipation of going forward with the ice bumper cars project perhaps next year. Also, I think that the flashing school speed limit signs in front of, for Pleasant Valley Way, in front of the high school and Kelly Elementary is a great idea, but I just wonder exactly how many we are getting at a cost of $60,000. And finally, I think everyone up here knows that I've been championing improvements to the sound system in council chambers for many years. My question is, will the sound system improvements budgeted for $25,000 be something that just benefits the hearing impaired, or will they improve the quality of sound for all who attend council meetings? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the general public? Seeing none, I open it to my council colleagues. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, thank you. Today, I've been tracking and following our firehouse improvements, and I'm glad to see that we're, had some roofs completed, and some still in the works, and we have here facade improvements. My question for you is, I know we had the study done for firehouses. Any work, being major repair, going to be planned for bathroom repair, or?
Won't be, won't be out of this capital. This capital is going to finish other roofs and other exterior improvements.
Okay, but has everything in regards to smaller repairs been sufficient for our firehouses along the way?
We're dealing with day-to-day issues as, as we need to, but, you know, the fire department as well, as well as engineering have determined that the very first thing, and it makes sense.
Yes, to turn the stuff down, yeah.
You can't, you know, you can't make improvements to the inside to have water to come in and ruin it. So we've got to get the outside buttoned up, and that, the funds that we have now, that's what we're going to be, or that we're requesting tonight, will be focused on that next phase. As you remember, we, the mayor committed to continue with this. There's a few million dollars worth of work to be done, so we'll continue next year and look at trying to allocate funds, and hopefully, if this year's funds covers all the outside funds, and hopefully if this year's funds covers all the outside, then we'll be able to move them to those inside projects.
And all our issues that we had as far as air conditioning or in such nature at the police department in that building, we're squared away with, where, I know there's always things we can do for improvement, but as far as a police station building?
It's an ongoing struggle with that building, but yes.
And of course, these are just budgeted items, so we find better, you know, it comes in at slower pricing, we always, or we don't feel that we should be doing a particular project, we could always allocate funds to other places. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the detail.
I had another question. With respect to, is this a pass one, pass all, or can council members exclude things from this capital improvement?
The ordinance itself has been introduced, and now for second reading, it's adopt or not. It's all, yeah, in your terminology, tonight, it's all or none.
Can I just express some frustration with all due respect, then?
Sure.
You've got to vote.
Let me clarify for you, so for process purposes, you know, as an ordinance purpose, there's no way to have a selection at this stage of the game without starting, you know, which can, if you decided to do, you could vote it down, say, well, we, we as a council don't want these following things, and then you could, we could reintroduce at the next meeting and go through that process.
Yeah. I will say that my sense of frustration is that while we did receive the resolution in a timely fashion, we received this when we walked in here this evening, not having the time to properly go over.
I don't interrupt, but just before we go too far down, that was sent to the council a month ago.
You guys picked that a month ago.
I did not see this a month ago.
Okay, that may very well be, I'm not suggesting, but it was sent out. I did, this afternoon at 4:15 was notified that the email that we sent you with the file didn't print out properly, didn't come out properly, so that's why it was on your desk tonight, because I got that notice tonight at 4:15 from Councilman Krokoviac. So I understand your frustration.
Yeah.
If you hadn't seen it prior to that, but we did distribute, the information is out there.
Okay. This was distributed when we first, during first reading?
A month ago, yeah, before first reading.
Before first reading. I will look at my email again, and if that is the case.
I went and looked at, today, when Councilman Krokoviac sent it, I went to look at it, see what was wrong with it, and I actually went, it was August 12th, I think, something like that.
Okay. And then, in that case, with respect to, because I did see the O'Connor Park Special Needs, but then what's the ice rink in O'Connor Park?
I'm sorry, I missed that last.
The ice rink in O'Connor Park.
That's been there.
It's been there.
What is that? We're building an ice rink?
The project, no, it's been there, they're just repairing it.
The ice rink.
It's for repair?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not new?
No.
Clearly.
It's not new.
They play street hockey and.
Okay.
There's no bumper cars.
No bumper cars.
Listen, and it's recorded, so I'm gonna hold you all. I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it is there, that's where our barktober is, so Michelle mentioned it before, that's where that is. So there is a feature up there, water feature. Claire also asked a question about the $300,000. I'm going to say that I would imagine that that's in, they built in there for change orders or anything that might.
If you recall, we had discussion, lengthy discussion at our budget meeting about this, that it was part of our budget strategy to get to a certain tax point, and was part of our getting to that tax point, and in terms of what those funds will likely be, could possibly be used for, certainly, they don't expire, so next year it could be the down payment on next year's capital, depending on where we are, you know, so that's what it's there for.
Yeah.
And just to clarify the other two things, the mayor's PowerPoint did talk about an $8 million, which, at that point in time, we were looking at about $6 million of the capital was going to be road program, which if you go through and add it all up, there's a little over $5 million minus, or $6 million minus the grants, which brings, which is why we don't have to go from 8 to 14, because we have grant money involved in there as well. So this does significant amount of road programs as well.
I want to also say about the ice bumper cars, they might not be in here, however, I would, they're such a revenue generator that if it is something that we ever consider down the road, Rhode Island has them, other states have them, and they generate an awful lot of revenue.
I'll just say this, we cannot do bumper cars without you all voting.
No, 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 I'm just saying that if there's ever a study or a survey, it'd be interesting to see what kind of revenue it's generating.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes, I wanted to follow up on Ms. Silvestri's questions on, with regard to the ice rink up at O'Connor Park. Why do we want to spend $70,000 to make it a watertight facility?
For our hockey. Hockey, yeah, practice, ice hockey, practice, skating.
Can I?
I would imagine.
Let Mr. Serres make the comment, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Serres.
You wanna make your comment first?
Well, now, working with the recreation department, ice time's very expensive, so we're able with our recreation programs, it will save money on ice time at the arena to do it, to do some practices up at O'Connor Park in the winter.
Councilman?
And that's.
Yes, we spend money now to send them to the arenas, so now that we're doing it on our own, it's gonna save us money.
And have you done a cost analysis, a cost-benefit analysis?
I have not, no, no, I have not.
Okay. So you realize that this isn't a regulation rink up there? I mean, our son played a couple of seasons there. You realize this isn't anywhere close to a regulation.
Yes, I know, because my son played street hockey. It's more of a street hockey rink that they're just, it's practice. So a lot of times we practice in drills, as you know, I don't explain to you, your son is a baseball player, but when you're on a quarter, feel like that, it's not so much you're gonna do a practice game as much as practice drills, and you don't need a whole regulation-size arena for that, you could just.
Unless, unless you're playing, if I may interrupt, I'm sorry.
Or the junior leagues.
Unless you're playing a regulation game, it doesn't matter, you know, if it's a practice facility, it doesn't matter.
P wings or, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Councilman, just.
Sure. And how is the, how is the ice maintained?
It's gonna be maintained just the way the other ice is maintained.
Well, it's an outdoor facility, so I'm just wondering, is it gonna be similar to what's done at Cody Arena?
Yeah, because underneath it'll be, you'll be able to make sure it stays cold.
Okay. Ms. Silvestri also asked about the school signs at Pleasant Valley Way. She asked about the $60,000 total and how much, how many signs that was going to cover.
Ballpark or somewhere between $7,500, I think, $10,000 per sign.
Each.
So.
So you're talking about six to eight signs?
Six to eight.
She also asked about the sound improvements in the council chambers, the $25,000. Was it going to be to actually fix some of the problems that we have, that we've been talking about for years, or is it just specifically for hearing impaired?
Yeah, I mean, the problems that we have here primarily are HVAC, and that's a different set of issues, and Mr. Lepore is working on what potential solutions we can get, because no matter what we put in this, what sound system we put in here, when the air conditioner goes on, it's gonna be difficult to hear in the back. It will include an upgrade of our sound, of the sound driver here in terms of more computerized as opposed to the current setup, be additional microphones, and will be something for hearing impaired as well.
Okay. I wanted to just address these questions before I got to my main issue tonight, and that is that we're being asked, we, the council, are being asked to basically borrow about almost $8 million, or authorize borrowing almost $8 million, including a cash down payment of almost $400,000. Mr. Gross, is, if this is approved tonight, is the plan for the funding of the cash down payment to be from the capital improvement fund?
Yes.
Okay. But I just wanna put some things into perspective, because it's really fun and it's great to spend money, but you, in a government, you have to pay it back, and it's the taxpayers that pay it back. The ordinance would bring the town's authorized and issued debt to a record $95.5 million, according to the supplemental debt statement. Including the $12 million we borrowed earlier this year to acquire Rock Spring, this would mean our debt would have risen by $15.6 million, or nearly 20%, just this year. Since 2010, that would mean our borrowing has increased by almost $36 million, or more than 60% in less than a decade. Last year, the council majority approved a capital budget ordinance of over $9.5 million, including borrowing of more than $9 million. I think, given what has happened this year with the 8.5% tax increase, that we need, we, the council, need to be prudent about these capital expenditures, particularly coming off of last year, which was a significantly large capital budget. And I think what we need to do is we need to vote this down and continue to the discussion, as I think Mr. Gross suggested, and pare this, pare this capital budget down to something more reasonable, and take into account that we've just put a big hit on the taxpayers, and they're gonna have to pay all of this money back as well. That's.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Councilwoman?
So, I appreciate that point, and to, and we always debate after you talk about the debt we incur, but you also have to add the debt we spent, we paid, pay off as well. And I agree, we're a little top-heavy because of the purchase of Rock Spring, which hopefully, when we apply for open space funds, that will, or green acres, rather, that will reduce, you know, reduce some of our debt spending. I too am not satisfied with all the projects on here, and I would recommend that we look them over and express if you have any particular concerns to administration. Again, you know, we, when these projects come before us, that will be the time to break them down individually if we're not happy with something, and funds could be allocated to somewhere else, but I, you know, we have this amount because of the budgeting strategy this year, which is unique. So it's not like we're gonna go out and spend this in a couple, capital bond every year just to spend and be spendthrifts. There are very important projects on here, such as our fire stations and whatnot, and some recreation facilities. We do need to keep our facilities in the best shape that we can, and this awards us an opportunity to do that. So that's why some of these smaller projects, I would like administration to look at, because if we could squeeze in some more facility improvements, because we have this opportunity with this, what we did with this strategy, I would like to see that done, as opposed to some other projects. So if you get a chance just to review the list, but we will have an opportunity if we don't wanna vote for a particular project. I just want the public to be aware of that. Thank you, Council President.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2584 on second reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinances on first reading, 2585-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 46 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange Emergency Management. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. 2586-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 61.6 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, dash functions. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
I'm voting yes, but I also want, before we move on to the next ordinance, to fix some problems with this wording of the ordinance now.
Okay. I had a question.
Do it now.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yeah, let's do it now.
Thank you. I raised these issues in questions earlier in the week, I'm sorry, several days ago, but they haven't been addressed, and I just wanna flag them again, because words matter to me, and I wanna get the words right here. On this proposed amendment to the ordinance, it refers to the body, the entity that we're addressing the ordinance to, I think in four different names, and I think we should, if for no other reason just than to not look silly, we should get the name of the entity agreed upon, and then use it exclusively throughout the ordinance. So the ordinance that is just now calls us the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Yes, but it is.
In the, in the, in the first article, it refers to it as the West Orange Pedestrian Advisory Board. In the legislative history, it refers to it as the West Orange Pedestrian Advisory Board. I think we should just, as a, as a, as a governing body, we should just agree what the name of the entity is, and just amend this ordinance so that it reflects what the entity is.
It's the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Save this one time.
That's the organization.
Okay.
So you have to add in safety after, on the purpose.
And the last thing is that they can review it on their planning and so, can we see the, and on the back.
Of the legislative history.
Fair enough.
Do you have that, Madam Clerk?
So we, as the governing body, are agreed it's the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory.
Can we please amend this to reflect that?
That's what it's supposed to, that's what it is.
Well, the word safety, yeah, it's missing two places, right?
In our, there's a folder that has a revised version, but do you call it a safety commission? Isn't the safety in?
I'm getting confused. It's West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Advisory. And it says safety, are we missing safety?
This printed version was the revised version that was on our.
Yeah.
Right.
When we came in.
Yeah, we're missing it in two spots.
Right.
Under one.
Actually, we're missing it in three, because in the title, it does not say West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. I know this is minor, but if it's our name, it's like referring to our Council President as Victor Cirillo. We can't have that happen.
But it's not. Why don't we just, why don't we just stick?
Does it do you?
Stick to the legislative history of it.
Right, West Orange Pedestrian Advisory Board, that's easiest.
But, so we have an ordinance, though, what is the ordinance? Is the ordinance a West Orange, it's the pedestrian safety?
No, the ordinance does not say West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory.
Mine does, on the top.
No, no, I don't mean this ordinance. We adopted an ordinance.
The ordinance that is now existing does not refer to it as the West Orange, it just refers to it as the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Right, and the word safety isn't even on here.
It is in the, it is in the existing ordinance.
Right.
The legislative history, right.
In this.
Like, we want it to be consistent, that's all he's asking, is make it.
Well, let's figure out what the real name is, and then we.
Well, safety has to be in there, because that's.
Two, one, purpose and legislative history don't actually alter any of the.
Right. None of this says, but we have an ordinance already on the book, so it's already codified, whatever that's called, should be what it should be.
Okay, good.
Because that's the one we're amended.
We'll make corrections.
So here's what it says, Chapter 2.61. The title is pedestrian, the title of the ordinance is Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Okay.
And then in the purpose, it says the Township of West Orange has established a Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
Correct, all right.
So my only point is, if we're gonna call it the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
You have. You have to go by what it says in the book.
Okay. Or else we should amend everything.
That's the point I was making.
What it says in the book.
Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board.
We're amending what's already on the record.
We're going to amend this to reflect what's here.
Okay.
We'll make sure it happens throughout.
So that's what we'll do?
That's what we will do.
Yes, okay. Madam Clerk?
I already did that one, so are we done with that one?
I'm sorry?
And then we'll move on to the new one? The next one?
We're just going to make it consistent.
The next one, oh yeah, we did vote on it.
Yeah, I will do that. Mark and I will work on it.
I just have a question.
Yeah, okay.
So what, what changed on this? Like, what, like, you didn't already recommend?
Wait, go ahead.
The advisory board, you didn't rec...
What we're, what we're doing is, we're doing exactly what...
Environmental Commission.
What her board did is to make it more part of the involvement with the planning board and zoning board, that we had input into any, any development.
So you weren't doing that already?
Just for planning.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Okay, so the original ordinance says that the Environmental Commission and Pedestrian Safety Commission can review planning board applications. It's been amended, what we're doing tonight is to amend it to say planning board applications as well as zoning board applications.
That's what we're trying to do.
So when it was originally drafted, we were thinking anything that came out of planning, but it's, we're making it specific to planning board applications and zoning board applications.
Got it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions?
Yes. Just, just a question of why we didn't include the, we could include the Environmental Commission as part of the entities that the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board could now address. Wouldn't the Environmental Commission be something you'd want to...
We did that.
But it's not, it's not in here.
No, it's not, because this is pedestrian safety. We did the Environmental Commission.
He's saying, why does pedestrian safety go to the Environmental Commission?
Why don't we include that in here as long as we're...
Because we're looking, well, truthfully, we're looking at the environmental impact on applications, and they're looking at pedestrian safety.
We're looking at the safety impact on the...
And they can make recommendations.
I understand that, you're looking at the safety impact, but you're also talking about now including the Open Space Recreation Committee. So I'm just thinking, if you're including open space in the amendment, why wouldn't you just want to throw in the Environmental Commission? But if you don't, that's fine, I just wanted to raise in case there hadn't been a thought.
No, 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 when I pulled my board, they felt it was just that, that's...
Okay. That's fine, just wanted to throw that out.
Can I move on to the next one?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
2587-19, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, Subsection 7-46.2, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Days on Certain Streets Servicing Residential Land Uses Except By Permit of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
To move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes, and then I, I have discussion.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to say something? Yes, please, because this is down in my, this is down in my neck of the woods. So, my question on this, I guess, Mr., Mr. Laporte's on here, Mr. Sayers, so Calvin Terrace with these permits, so I go to, I understand the issue that's been going on there, because I have a few friends that, that live there, but I go to my friend's house for a visit, I need a permit, like, how does that work? Like, how do I park on their street now? Is it the entire street needs a permit to park there?
No, what, what it is, is the people who live on the streets will be eligible to get permits to park in, that's, that was the big issue. The people in the neighborhood wanted the permits to be able to park on the street.
Okay, yeah, but here's where my confusion is, so if you have a guest of someone's home...
You can let them park in your parking space. You have the permit.
I know, but there's only so many homes on that street, and so many, and one side of the street you can't park, so I'm just trying to how, it's not a big street, so I don't understand how many spots...
Because there were people from across the street...
Oh, I get that, definitely got that.
Were parking there, and parking your cars there, and the people who live there could not park their vehicles there.
They came to the meeting.
Yes, they were at the meeting.
They were at the meeting.
I, I know, I'm friends with them on the street, but my question is, so they're guests, so each household on that street will get a parking pass, permit?
You get a permit, yes, and if you want someone else to park there, they're allowed to park.
But I'm having a party, and I have five, you know, five guests coming, five cars out there.
If you have a party on that street, and there's five guests, they can't park on that street now.
I, I know, I know.
There's not enough places for them to park.
But I'm just stating.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I'm just stating, though, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the, you know, the pros and cons of it.
The permit goes to the house. If you live at, at 10, 10 gets a permit, you got a permit, you can get two permits, if you have two cars.
Okay, so if I have guests over, and I have five...
You can even say to your neighbor, hey, you mind if somebody parks? No, go ahead, no problem.
So they have to work amongst themselves, then?
Yes, yes.
First come, first served.
The only, yeah, the only issue is going to be, is, the big issue was, because all the people who live in the apartment house across the street...
Oh, I know that.
Are parking on those streets, and the people who own the homes on those streets, nowhere to park.
So my next question to you is, because, you know, when we do something like this, they're going somewhere else, what about Eagle Terrace? Have we looked into, is, because the problem may move up to Eagle Terrace, or the other street, I forgot the name of it, but the dead end across the street from Calvin?
I don't know if Mr. Laporte looked at that to be quite honest with me.
Okay, yeah, and he was sick today, yeah, okay. So just, we could look into that to see if there's any issues there, because again, Eagle Terrace is limited with parking, too, and I could see them moving up. And then my, my next question is, because, do we, do we understand why there are short spaces? I mean, are they having too many peoples in, in the apartments lately? Like, why is this all sudden happening now? Or has this been a problem for years?
It's been happening for a very long time. The people who live in the apartment buildings across the street are parking on those side streets, and the people who own the homes there don't have any parking spaces.
I know, because I know people, my question...
Well, you just asked me the question, that's what it is.
But my question is, at what's going on at the apartment complex? Do they take spots away? Are they only allowed two? I know, I know, my, my house and my kids were home, we had five cars, and only three fit in the driveway.
Well, that's the problem. Some of the people who live in those apartments have two or three cars, and you'll probably only get one parking space.
Okay.
One, one space. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that's what the issue is.
Did we ever go talk to them over the apartment complex?
Oh, yes.
And all that, that's like...
We've had numerous conversations with them.
Okay, just, let's check that.
You can't stop someone from parking on the street that says, you can park there. You can't do that.
Oh, I know, I, I know, I have neighbors that go crazy, and people park in front of that house.
That's why when you have to permit parking, now it, it becomes legal for us to say, you can't park there.
Okay.
Well, without the permit, you're allowed to park there.
Let's just look out for Eagle Terrace and the other street, just to make sure we don't have issues there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We saw that, we saw that already with Seenhaw Prep. When it started on Oak Ridge, then they moved to Linden, and they just kept moving.
It just keeps going up that way.
Okay. Next is pending matters, new matters, council discussion, discussion, medical marijuana dispensary.
Mr. Moon, it's up to you now.
Okay.
Take the microphone, please, thank you.
So I circulated to members of the council a memorandum with a sort of, a very, very preliminary draft ordinance. As, as referenced, early in July of this past year, State of New Jersey adopted legislation which ultimately overhauled the sort of framework in which licensed medical marijuana facilities could operate within the State of New Jersey. One of the biggest things that, that state legislation did was, it created an entity called the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, which is going to be, the state agency that's going to govern the issuance of licenses for specific categories of what I've sort of termed medical marijuana, licensed medical marijuana facilities. I, I don't need to go into great details as far as what the statute provides, as I've tried, I did my best to frame it within the memorandum for you guys to sort of consider. The whole idea is, this is sort of new ground. A lot of towns in New Jersey are sort of trying to figure out how to reconcile their zoning and sort of their requirements, and regulating this new sort of area that's going to be popping up, whether you like it or not. I can tell you that there has not been a lot of, or I've done the research and tried to find other towns, and I've sort of gave you a couple of samples. Some towns are sort of just burying their heads and hoping that nothing happens. The whole idea is, we want to be a little bit more proactive.
So may I?
Sure.
To that point, that I don't know if this falls under retail, but we don't have this in our zoning books right now, so the timing is right, I guess, to do this, because we don't have zone.
Yes.
You know, where they go. So the fact that we are in the midst of updating our master plan, the mayor, I guess, was a step ahead of this, because he's already reached out to the planner and the planning board to discuss this topic and create zoning.
So, part of it is, some of this is not necessarily, I can sort of paint the boundaries of what we can and can't do, but at the end of the day, how we want to frame it is going to be up to you guys, because we're going to be crafting sort of how we want the zoning regulations to...
Yeah, right, but the point I'm trying to make is that if we can't, if we don't even have a zone for it, don't we have to create that first before we can adopt that?
Well, what, the, the way that the ordinance was framed was that we're going to make it, we're going to add it as part of, as of this moment, B1 and B2 and industrial zoning. Now, whether you want, as I mentioned, there's different types of facilities, whether you want to have specific facilities for specific zones, again, these are all things that need to be sort of discussed and figured out. And sort of, you know, I don't know if each of you has specific positions or thoughts, but sort of, in the next coming weeks or so, you know, these are sort of ideas and positions I would kind of need to sort of take in, yeah.
So I guess my main question right now is, is, is this the state, or passes that something we have to implement, or it's our choice right now to implement?
So, so the state has adopted a statute, basically saying that they've created an agency that's going to be issuing licenses to businesses to operate these types of, to these types of facilities.
But are we mandated to accept them in our community?
Well, we...
That's my first question.
Okay.
Is it a mandate?
We are, we cannot prohibit it. The, the statute explicitly says we can't prohibit transfers and sales within our municipalities. Whether, whether or not we have, the, long and short of it is, I'm not sure. No, there hasn't been any sort of municipality that has been bold and specifically say, to zone it out of existence. I would assume, because of the fact that it is a state statute, that it would be subject to challenge. So that's part of the reason why it's not a good idea to sort of bury it heads in the sand. I think it's a better idea to be proactive and say, hey, listen, if these instances are coming, we should figure it out.
But here's, here's my issue with something like this, and going back to, you know, my council colleague working on the, the, the plastic banning of the plastic bags.
Right.
I'm not in a rush to always be the first to roll something out that is experimental. I like to see how other communities are handling it, and, you know, why rush something if we don't have to rush into something, unless it's a great benefit. I, I like to see us take our time with it and not make a mistake, and, so I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I just like to get, I hope you were provided with enough information, and I don't want to sit at the next council meeting having to vote on this.
No, no.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
If I may, and this is just the beginning of a discussion that we have to actually act upon, because it is state statute at this point, and, and it is a discussion that I've been having with respect to hosting a forum in our town, along with South Orange and West, Maplewood and Montclair. Montclair already has a medicinal dispensary in their town. I, I think, I know that when, when we hear the word marijuana or cannabis, it's, it's pretty taboo for many of us, but the League of Municipality hosted a workshop on, a mayor's roundtable, on the implications of legalization of marijuana in the state of New Jersey, and there was a very interesting discussion, you know, the, the opinions were, and perspectives were from all sides. So I think that we have to start proactively looking, and, and like I said, I was going to host a town hall for some residents who were interested in, in some information, and, and just get some information, because there's a lot of good work that the League is doing with respect to giving out information. The League has not yet taken a position on whether or not it's going to support this, but at least they're providing information, and I think that, that's where we should start. This is just, and, and I'm saying this just to be clear to, to the public...
Keep in mind, this, this is also, this is not recreation.
No, yeah, medicinal, absolutely, I understand.
I understand.
And, and look, the fact of the matter is, we can be part of the process and make the decisions as to how we want it, envision it, and working out, or we can have those decisions made for you.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the reality of the situation. If I'm a licensed operator, and I want to be in West Orange, and there's only won't let me do it, I'm going to, I'll fight it, you know what I'm saying? So, better to have a system in place, and you guys can make the decision and say how you want it.
Regulate, yeah.
Keep in mind, there's also implications, as I mentioned, one of the things that this statute provides for is that the township can implement a transfer tax as a source of revenue. That's a possibility that the statute allows for, so a decision has to be made, a decision has to be made as to whether or not the town wants to impose that. There's decisions that have to be about how do you want to, yeah, whether you want to have, you know, like, my, my, there's hours of operations, you know, you want to keep certain distance, buffer zones away from things like schools or other institutions like that.
Yeah, that's my concern.
But, but again, so, better for us to make those decisions, to decide it, whether, than having those decisions made through litigation.
All right. Mark? There are three designations, though, right? With this whole thing? You can either be a distributor, you can be a grower, and I think there's another...
There's more.
So, I'm, I'm not going to refer to the formal, they're all technical terms that the statute provides for, but essentially, the way that the statute is framed, there's, it's actually four.
Four.
One is the actual manufacturers, think of, like, basically planting, growing. Two, the second is, think of it as a wholesaler, they don't actually grow it, they don't actually sell directly to patients, but they're sort of, you know, wholesale, you do it in the other way. And then the final is basically the ultimate dispensary, where patients come in with their prescriptions and are able to purchase products. And then the fourth category is sort of a, sort of a hybrid of all four.
And, and there was a stipulation that the township could charge a sales tax on it that would come to the township?
Yeah, there's a, there's, it's, it's what, what's called a transfer tax, it's, municipality is authorized to, for every transaction, impose a 2% tax directly.
Is it 2% or up to 2%?
Up to 2%.
Up to 2%.
And is it, is that 2% tax, whatever revenue we get? I'm sorry, Councilwoman, the 2% that we would generate, would that be designated for a specific program or for the general fund?
General fund.
General fund?
There's, there's, as of now, there's no limitations. And as, and as much as I would say, if you're going to do this, certainly we want to look at, at, at whatever revenue enhancement that could come from it, I also think that it's important that, there's a legitimate medical need out there, however you feel about it, putting all that aside, in the medical community, there's, there's, there is a legitimate medical need that is not being filled because of the scarcity of, of the facilities that are out there now. So, it's, not, not that that should be, that's not your decision, but you, I think you need So, not that that should be, that's not your decision made, but I think you need to weigh that as well.
So, for example, one of the decisions that the council should be considering is, the statute authorizes municipalities to create what's called consumption zones, specific places where patients can actually, you know, ingest or take whatever prescription products that they purchase. That's kind of separate apart from whether or not they can buy, sell, or transfer, because that's how it works.
Can I just say your point, as a point of consideration, and obviously, again, just the beginning of a conversation that we're having, places of consumption are, serve the purpose for those who are renters of apartments and may have. And I'm reflecting on Oregon and Washington DC, which is what I'm most familiar with, that, you know, there are some municipalities that regulate even smoking on your balcony, if you will. So, you know, that's not the case here, but sometimes municipalities opt to provide a place of consumption, because it removes the risk of tenants being...
Where I live, is, my, it's a smoke-free environment.
Yeah.
So, like, the landlord is, you cannot smoke in that building. So, people in that situation have to figure out what they're gonna do, you know, and it's tricky, I mean, to me. That's a trickier part than the dispensary part.
They're probably vaping.
It's public, it'd be more public.
As far as timing goes, you know, I try to get you as much stuff as...
Sure.
I don't know what type, I guess a part of the process is, you guys gotta figure out what the timeframe wants to be as well. If this is something that you want to, you know, again, I don't, the town, we're figuring it all out, just a lot of municipalities are. I've looked at a bunch of different draft ordinance for a bunch of different towns. Some of them are great, some of them, in my opinion, completely violate the statute, but that's on them. So, whatever happens, it's gonna be sort of first steps. Some mistakes can be made, who knows, throughout the journey. So, but all towns are sort of facing the same sort of decisions.
Anything else? No?
I would just recommend to my council colleagues and the general public, because the League of Municipality did do a workshop on this. They have a PowerPoint, and all the information that they presented during this is online. You don't have to log in. You can just, you know, go on the njlm.org website and look for the mayor's roundtable on legalization of marijuana. I think that we all, you know, start looking into it ourselves, so that we have questions that we bring to the table, and then, you know, hopefully are better informed.
Thank you, Councilwoman, my colleagues, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Then we could reach out to you for more information, correct?
Yeah.
And we should let the residents know that they have any opinions, they should let the council colleagues know what the, our residents feel. We'd like to hear into what Councilwoman Matu Brown said, they should go and do some research, too, just so they have the full picture and understand. And any other townships that have allowed this to go on, particularly, we have neighboring towns that do have these facilities currently in operation. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you, my council colleagues. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion to adjourn the council meeting?
Motion to adjourn, anyone?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I? Me opposed?
Thank you, West Orange. We'll see you on September 24th. Don't forget about the great events going on in the township, particularly the Edison site, Glenmont, and a few of the other things. You know, idle, 5K, Baglani Walk 1, so make use of it. And I also want to congratulate the Farmers Market and also the OSback operation. Thank you, West Orange, and have a great evening.